It's 6:32 and I will call the regular session of the San Gabriel City Council to order. Pledge of Allegiance tonight will be led by Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. Please rise, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
...of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pu.
Present.
Vice Mayor Menchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Costanzo.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Liao.
Here.
All right, now we have approval of agenda order. Is there any amendments?
Move approval.
No.
Motion to Pu.
Okay, any objection? Seeing none, it is so ordered. Presentations.
Presentation A, Most Business Friendly City in Los Angeles County Finalist. Presentation will be made by Joseph Torres, Economic Development and Business Assistance Programs Area Director for the Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation.
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Joseph Torres with the Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation, or LAEDC. On behalf of the LAEDC, it is our pleasure to honor the city of San Gabriel as a 2019 Most Business Friendly City finalist, actually for the fourth time in the last five years. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It takes teamwork and big-picture thinking on economic growth to be a Most Business Friendly City finalist. With a commitment to being a business-friendly city, the cornerstone of San Gabriel's success has been the ability of the city's elected officials, leadership and staff to work together and focus consistently on fiscal stability, to enhance the business and commercial health of the community, to build the city's business and job base, and to coordinate with regional economic development partners to bring vitality to the community. San Gabriel is a city marked by diversity, where independent spirits thrive, where working and living are made easy, and dynamic backdrops unleash imagination and creativity. And what's distinctive about its diversity is that it is built around shared community, identity, values, beliefs, and passion. We all hear how hard it is to do business in California, but San Gabriel is different. San Gabriel is a business-friendly and fosters the business climate where companies can grow, prosper, and thrive. When doing business with the city of San Gabriel, businesses have access to direct communication, professional engagement, responsive departments, and the willingness to help businesses succeed. In 2006, LAEDC created the Most Business Friendly City Award after hearing from site selectors around the world that Los Angeles County was not business-friendly. The Most Business Friendly City Award was created to challenge cities like San Gabriel on, among other things, three important initiatives. Number one, to create an environment conducive for business retention and expansion. Number two, to attract and retain good-quality jobs, excuse me, and to encourage new business investment. As California's only Business Friendly City Award, the program recognizes cities that are committed to providing high-quality service at reasonable rates, deliver services beyond expectation, and make economic development a top priority. The city of San Gabriel has indeed placed a high priority on economic development to meet the growing economic needs of the community by attracting new businesses and facilitating the expansion of existing businesses through its various business-friendly programs. The winner of this prestigious award will be announced at the LAEDC's Eddie Awards this coming Thursday, November 7. The Eddie Awards have become one of the most prestigious awards program in California, attended by 600 of the region's leaders to recognize exceptional economic development leadership in business and government in Los Angeles County. San Gabriel is in good company, along with other small-city finalists, which are Duarte, La Mirada, Monrovia, and Santa Fe Springs. This year's large-city finalists include Rosemead, Gardena, Norwalk, Pasadena, and Lancaster. Again, on behalf of the LAEDC, it is our pleasure to honor the city of San Gabriel as a 2019 Most Business Friendly City finalist, and to recognize your leadership, commitment to business-friendly, excellent programs, job and business creation, and our economic development partnership. We applaud your efforts and encourage you to continue developing and evolving your business-friendly services, and to get the word out to your local business community, brokers, site selectors, and media so that they are aware of everything that you have to offer. Congratulations again, and we look forward to seeing you, your City Councilmembers and leaders, at the Eddie Awards this coming Thursday. Thank you. And on behalf of the LA County Board of Supervisors, I'd like to present you your certificate and your plaque as a finalist.
Fantastic. Let's join Joe down here. All right, thank you, Joe, for coming down. I'll need to steal parts of your speech for our speech when we win this thing on Thursday. Next item, please.
Introduction of Recreation Supervisor Matthew Morales Stevens. Presentation will be made by Community Services Intermission Playhouse Director Rebecca Perez.
Good evening, Mayor Pu and members of the City Council. It is always great to introduce a new employee, but tonight I have the great privilege of introducing an employee who was recently promoted. Matthew Morales Stevens, who many of you know as our mastermind behind many of our community engagement events, will now take on a new role as Recreation Supervisor. Matthew started his career in recreation at the age of 15 with the city of Long Beach. He quickly discovered that recreation programming was his passion. While working in the field, he completed his Bachelor of Arts degree in recreation from California State University Long Beach, and then his Master of Public Policy and Administration. Prior to joining San Gabriel, he worked for the city of Irvine overseeing recreation programs and special events for seniors. With his previous role as Recreation Coordinator with our department, Matthew oversaw facility rentals, part-time staff, citywide special events, the Summer in San Gabriel series, and more. In his new position, Matthew will be coordinating older adult programming, trips, facility reservations, special events, and the summer day camp. Matthew is detail-oriented, a great multitasker, and provides excellent customer service. He is a great asset to the Community Services Department team, and we are pleased to have him as our new Recreation Supervisor. Please join me in congratulating Matthew.
Thank you, Rebecca. It's definitely been an honor working for the city of San Gabriel for going on close to two years now. My previous experience working with the other cities has definitely kind of enlightened the way I approach things here in the city of San Gabriel, but I'm definitely proud to say that I am an employee of the city of San Gabriel. We have some amazing leadership from our city manager to council, our mayor, and of course, our director, Rebecca. So, being a part of that team is really inspirational, and it definitely is a driving force in wanting to continue working for the city and providing stellar A-plus programs and events for the residents and non-residents of the city of San Gabriel. So, thank you for this opportunity, and I hope to work with all of you even more in the future.
Congratulations, Matthew. It'll be great. It's great to have you as a familiar face continuing to lead our award-winning community engagement programs. Thank you very much for all your work. Next item, please.
Introduction of Public Works Maintenance Worker One, Steve Menciaus. Presentation will be made by Public Works Director and City Engineer Greg Devink.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I'm here tonight to introduce our newest employee, Steve Menciaus. Steve joined the San Gabriel Public Works family last week as our newest Maintenance One worker with our sewer group. Today is his sixth day working for the city of San Gabriel, and he fit in so well and so naturally, you'd think he's been here for years. This is the new position that council approved. It's funded with the city assessment fee, and what it enables us to do is expand our in-house operations to include fat soils and grease inspections, industrial waste inspections, and more of our own sewer video inspections instead of hiring consultants. This will ultimately save funds that can be applied to capital projects, and also increases the quality of the programs we're offering. Steve comes to us with 21 years of public works experience with the city of El Monte, but most recently had been working as a Class A truck driver with a special license designation to haul hazardous materials. This is one of those "good-to-have-but-hope-we-never-need-it" type of licenses. He has broad training and experience in many public works and building trades, including tree maintenance, sewer maintenance, concrete, asphalt, HVAC, and most building trades. Several current public work staff already knew Steve before he got here, and all were very excited to learn that he was selected in the recruitment. On a closing note, Steve has a wife. He's been married 19 years, and he has four sons. Lot of boys in that house. He has owned a couple of horses, a couple of dirt bikes, and all kinds of toys for playing on the water. So I'm very pleased to welcome Steve to the San Gabriel family.
How you guys all doing? Thank you, guys, for your time. Want to say thank you, guys, for giving me the opportunity to work here, and hope to see you guys, see a lot more of you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Thanks for joining the San Gabriel family, especially if you're coming from our, you know, our frenemies over in the city of El Monte. Let Mayor Quintero know that we got one of his better ones. Okay, next is public comment.
This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. In an effort to provide everyone with an opportunity to speak, please be aware that all public comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. You will receive a 30-second warning as you approach the end of your time. As a reminder, please be respectful of all speakers regardless of the position they take on any items. If you wish to address the City Council, we request that you please complete a speaker's request card and hand it to the clerk. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Sharon. I currently have one speaker's request card, and it's from Debbie Kilgore.
Good evening, members of the City Council. I'm here to talk about the Arroyo Village Condominium project. I, it's a project that the review of the CEQ, the CEQA, just started, but I'm here about something that I discovered at a meeting with Alhambra residents and residents of San Gabriel. There is a project that is done at many different cities, especially the coastal area, but also in San Marino. You may have driven by and seen houses where construction is beginning, and you see little flags, little triangular flags around the property. That is called staking a design, and I'd like to see that done for this particular project on Arroyo Drive. It's a very irregular shape. The city land assessor's map does not show the additional properties from Alhambra, the R1 properties that were bought in as part of this condominium project. And when you drive down south of Arroyo, you don't know that there is going to be a 41-unit condominium across the River Wash, and that is San Gabriel. So people don't know it. In the site plan that's in the 826 pages I got on a study, have a very weird shape, and I'm going to email you these tomorrow. But you don't know where this property is going to be. I tried to, I went into the 800 pages of the paperwork that I had copied. There were no pictures of the architectural drawings. Three of the architectural drawings that are presented on the website were not available in the drawing, so I can't show you what this property is going to look like with the condominiums. But a staking a design is done by the planning staff, for the design review meeting, and for neighbors. What they do is actually put up polls. They're called story polls, and what they do is allow you to see the size of the property, how tall it is, the shape of it, and it gives you an idea of what this project will look like. This is a project that you can't look at directly because you can't even get near the wash where this particular piece of property of San Gabriel is. So these polls will give us a design review of what this project is going to look like. So, and this is a copy of their project, two-page project that talks about the story polls or staking a design. So I would like to have you guys be aware of this project that could be done at this city. This is not a property where you can see the front, the sides, and the back of it. You cannot tell where this property is going to be, and there's a bridge going over it. So, I went to San Gabriel today because I was told about this, and it was very interesting to learn about. But it's very simple. It's to make us be aware of what is coming to our neighborhood, the height, because this property is also taking out a hillside of Alhambra where Alhambra residents live, and the garage is not underground in the front part. If you could see the architectural drawings, you see the bridge actually drives in directly to the garage. So, the property is not subterranean. The garage is not. They are taking down a hillside to build part of the garage, but when you look at the property and you look at the drawings, you look directly into the garage. So it is a five-story building. So I would like to have this looked at by the planning department, the design review department, and maybe, and do this as part of this particular project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Kilgore. Those are all the speaker's request cards that I have. Would any other member of the public like to address the City Council at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Next item, please.
Consent Calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the City Council or audience requests separate discussion.
All right. Are there any items to be pulled from the consent calendar? No?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item E.
Item E, okay. Item E is hereby pulled from consent. Any others? Is there a motion for the balance?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and seconds. Go to the board for A through D and F.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Okay. You want to lead the discussion on item E?
Yes. So I was at the supermarket today. I was stopped by a resident, and he asked me a question. And, "When are we going to fix the Las Tunas drive?" I said, "Well, I don't know. I need to ask our city engineer and get the date, but, you know, if I can't have approximate date, I can give an answer."
Specifically for Las Tunas, we did pave some of it in a prior streetscape project. We are going for funding of a new streetscape project to help subsidize the cost of it, and also evaluate, we're right now evaluating our sewer modeling to see what sewer work we have to do. We certainly don't want to do sewers after we pave. I do not have even an estimated date at this time. It's not within the next two years where we're forecasting out.
Well, you were, the condition is very poor, but besides that, I have a question regarding the, let's see, page two. Tonight, we have to approve, pending council's approval, regarding a $50,000, you know, extra construction allowance, and do we have to vote? Or you can go ahead and use that $50,000.
All right, I'll explain the $50,000 portion. We did go out to bid, and we went out for the competitive process, and a contractor won, and we awarded it all as normal with contingency. After we went out to bid, we became aware of a product that is new, fairly new to the industry, and it's a very cost-effective way to add tensile strength to asphalt, which is generally why it fails and cracks over time. And so, it's, the $50,000 is a line item that the city could use to add the fiber and plastic mix at the batch plant, and when the street material gets delivered in the hot trucks and rolled out, it will be milled with fibers spread throughout it. The fiber itself simulates quite a lot more asphalt. When we pay for four inches on a new street, adding the fiber makes it five, five-and-a-half inches in simulated strength. So, we felt it's a very cost-effective way. It is a bit experimental for us. It'll be a very long time before we realize, was this great or not, because we expect a new street to last a long time anyway. But I do believe adding tensile strength to asphalt is very valuable. It's a very good return on our investment. For possibly up to $50,000, we might add five or 10 years to these streets that we're fully replacing. If you do have more technical questions on that, Alex Cotrotzios with Pacific GeoSource is in the audience. He represents the company that actually makes the fibers.
Oh, interesting. So, it's $50,000 for the total project, or it's just one?
That's the total project to do, to add fiber to all the streets, and it wasn't negotiated with the contractor yet, so that's an allowance that lets us negotiate the add. It should be enough to cover all the streets we're resurfacing with this project.
So, for such a small amount of money, and we can have five to 10 years' extension of life, I think it's worth it. So, you need us to vote to approve, I'm the one, I'll motion it. Second question, okay, because we have, we have about 4.3, 4.7, 4.4 million in gray street project account. Now, we're going to use that 2.2 million, so there's 1.9 million left. So, do you intend to spend all the money next year, or what's your plan for that 1.9 million?
Okay, well, yes. It'll go, it'll get spent in next year's contract, but my overall plan is, as you know, we've gone through street presentations, and about a third of our city has good streets, a third of our city's medium streets, and a third of our city's really poor streets that require full remove and replace. Unfortunately, they cost many times more to do those. What I'm hoping to do with that money and whatever other prop and measure and gas tax money comes in, is to continue replacing, this project that's going out right now is full remove and replace every street we're doing. I want to do some of that next year, more in the range of one-ish million dollars, and the rest of it, I would like to do an asphallic overlay process that's very cost-effective. It actually is about 1/15th the cost of paving a street, and we do that with also, again, fiber-added slurry mix on top of that. And that I'd like to apply to as many medium-conditioned streets as I can to extend the life of those, so they don't degrade to the full remove and replace condition that we see as our most inefficient repair jobs that now we face from decades of underfunding. So, to be cost-efficient, I'm hoping next year's program slurries and does asphalt mix over the top to extend the life of medium is what I really want to focus on next year. But there's always the concern for the full remove and replace, the worst streets. There really is no other way to deal with them except fully remove and replace what we have.
Thank you. So, well, no, last question, because, you know, our trash company, they collect all the abandoned tires, so the, a lot of them, they don't have people to buy them. So, if there is, I don't know, if you can check the press, because the $50,000, I think that's really, really low, really cheap, but if, if the rubberized, you know, pavement material will be cheaper than this one, why not consider, because it has smoother ride?
Yeah, rubberized will not be cheaper. It does provide a nicer wearing surface for the top lift of pavement. It is smoother, but it does cost quite a bit more, and it doesn't add tensile strength. It doesn't really add much to the life of the road. It just creates a nicer finished product.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Greg, for those clarifications, and yeah. Sure. Councilmember Harrington?
So, Greg, when you're saying it's adding tensile strength, is that adding our value to the road, or what is it actually, is it doing?
I'm going to bring up the expert.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Evening.
My name is Alex Cotrotzios with Pacific GeoSource. So you're asking if it adds our value to the, our value is a value for a soil.
Yeah, but when you're adding the tensile strength, theoretically, you're putting less, you're putting less pressure onto the soil, right? Because that's a dynamic force you're putting onto the asphalt.
Your, the four-inch lift is going to still be a four-inch lift in that, and that's going to still weigh the same unit weight that a four inches weighs. Structurally, it's going to add an inch and a half or so to the structural capacity of that section of asphalt.
So you're just using less material with the same strength, then?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions? I'd certainly appreciate Greg and your team, you know, focusing on total pavement lifecycle cost. You know, that's the, that I think is the most useful metric in terms of being cost-efficient with our limited pavement rehabilitation dollars. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is, let's go to the board.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Public Hearing, Ordinance Number 655, Adoption of 2019 California Building and Fire Codes. Introduction. Presentation will be made by Management Analyst Chris Calbocchio.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Chris Calbocchio. I'm the Management Analyst for the Building Division in the Community Development Department. The item before you is the introduction of the city ordinance to adopt the latest version of the Building Standard Codes and Amendments specifically for the city of San Gabriel. The first reading is to introduce the ordinance and to seek direction from council. If approved, the second reading will be the next council meeting on November 19th for adoption. The Building Standard Codes are updated every three years. These updates are necessary to keep up with new technologies, new scientific knowledge, and state goals. Some examples include solar photovoltaic systems being required in new residential construction to meet state goals for energy efficiency, and more stringent construction for balconies exposed to elements like structural weatherproofing to safeguard potentially high occupancy areas in a home. If adopted, it will be, it will apply to the construction projects on and after January 1st, 2020. The state recognizes that each local jurisdiction has unique geographical and climate needs, and statewide mandates may not work well for every local area. Therefore, cities are allowed administrative and technical amendments adopted into the city ordinance. In broad view, in broad view, these are essentially two categories of amendments. The first type of amendment are historical and have been on the books for a long time. Building and fire staff reviewed the historical ordinance and how it was related, sorry, relevant to current environment. While all of them are detailed in the staff report, some highlights include fire sprinkler alarm requirements, sandblasting regulations, and other specialized construction. and other specialized construction. The second type of amendment, amendments are technical in nature and include structural design, prevent seismic hazard beyond the state prescriptive methods. This is because the city of San Gabriel, along with other cities and counties in the Los Angeles basin are higher earthquake hazard zones due to the close proximity to faults. Since notice to the public is crucial, we posted the code update information on the city's website, on the public counter, and on the bulletin board since early October. Because code updates are update, updated, updates are a state mandate, if code amendments aren't adopted, they will, they will be mandated as published. This concludes my introduction to the ordinance. Both the deputy fire marshal and myself are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, great, thank you. Questions, comments from council? As this is a public hearing item, then, I'm sorry. Okay, as this is a public hearing item, I will open the public hearing portion of this, of this agenda item. Are there any members of the public who would like to ask questions or address the council regarding this item? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing for this item. Further discussion, anybody, anyone, no?
I do, I do.
Okay, Mr. Councilmember Leal?
So in the past, I guess, city never require fire alarm for residential or commercial buildings, right? So from this ordinance, we have to notify the building owners. Any buildings over 3,000 square feet, they require to install fire alarm. So how do we plan to notify all these building owners?
Let me actually have our deputy fire marshal, Simon. He can elaborate more on the fire requirements.
Good evening, it's not a new, it's always been in the municipal, when I say always, since 1995, it's been in the municipal code. It's not a new ordinance.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's been around?
Yes, it has.
Okay, yeah, because as I understand, some, they don't, they don't have that fire alarm, but they have fire sprinkler throughout the city. And, you know, because I think it's in here, we, well, supposedly over 4,000 square feet then you require, right? But a lot of homes that, you know, like 2,000, they still have that, well, it was, you know, enforced by the city and they have the fire sprinklers. So that's a...
Fire alarm is only for the commercial buildings. It doesn't affect the residential.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, my home, I was just trying to explain, as a residential, but I do have fire sprinklers.
You have fire sprinklers, smoke detectors, those types of devices, but we don't have like a real fire alarm system.
No, not fire alarm, fire alarm separate. That's what I'm asking, you know, fire alarm, if you read it, you know, it says both residential and commercial require fire alarm. If it's, the building size is over 3,000, so.
Yeah, residential could mean like apartment building.
Apartment building.
Yeah, it doesn't affect residential.
So the apartment building, you know, the total square footage, it has to be 3,000. For instance, well, 3,000 is not big, you know, it's maybe a couple of units. 1,500 each units of 3,000 already. So that require fire alarm. But even that, you know, that's kind of strange because I would think you need a larger building to install a fire alarm, you know. But if it's just 3,000 square feet, it's, it's a very small footage.
Well, once they have fire sprinklers, they already have monitoring, it's just adding few extra devices. I mean, for what you gain in fire life safety, I mean, I think it's worth it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, I have maybe just two questions. First of all, city attorney, the San Gabriel specific amendments, I just wanted to confirm, are those, are those, San Gabriel specific amendments common to other cities, you know, in LA County? Because the stated justification is due to sort of, you know, the earthquake zone, also the sort of proximity of buildings, so forth and so on.
You know, I would have to defer to staff on this, I didn't prepare those.
And thank you, Mr. American, actually respond to that. Well, these are San Gabriel specific amendments. They are generated by the code workers in the entire area. So most of LA County will have these exact same, and Chris, feel free to jump on me if I'm wrong. But most cities have the exact same adoptions, and it's more regional than city by city. But we have to adopt it city by city, so they become the San Gabriel specific code amendments.
Okay, great, yeah, I think that's, that's what I got from this LA Regional Uniform Code Program appendix that's attached to the agenda materials. Secondly, I think, as I read the materials here, projects that were issued building permits under the current codes, is it correct to say then that those projects, if they've not yet commenced construction, would have a year from the time of that, of the permit issuance to commence construction under the current set of codes, you know, relating to the existing permit? And if they do not do so, if they do not commence construction within that one-year period, then they would have to actually update and amend their building plans and get a new building permit, you know, for, in order to commence construction? Is, I think that's what I got from this, but I would just want to confirm.
So typically, they have six months to commence construction after the permit's been pulled. And as long as they start construction and they're proceeding in good faith, they can, their plans can be approved and they can use the plans with, with the older code. If they don't start construction, they could get an extension from us. Usually, it's six months for a permit to expire, they can get a six-month extension. But when you have a new code cycle, if they don't commence construction typically by June, they would have to do a code update.
Okay, got it, thanks very much, appreciate that. Any other questions or comments from the council? And just for the public, you know, these are state codes that, you know, obviously, most of which we must adopt, you know, keeping up the date with seismic retrofitting and fire standards, so forth and so on. So appreciate the staff, whose job was it to read all of the manuals, all of these codes? There's like eight of them or something?
We kind of, all of us went over it, I read most of it.
Divide and conquer, excellent. All right, so is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion.
And just to make it clear, the motion is the staff recommendation, which includes waiving, full reading, and adopting by title only.
Councilmember Leal, do you accept that?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Okay, motion and second, let's go to the board.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you, Chris and Joe, and everybody in community development, fire marshal. Next item, please.
New business, 2018-19 year-end review, unaudited 2019-20 first-quarter budget review, and 2020-21 budget kickoff. Presentation will be made by management specialist and acting finance director Paula Chamberlain.
Uh, look at that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have for you tonight, the 2019-20 first-quarter financial report. On the agenda is our 2018-19 year-end preview with unaudited numbers. The audit has, the onsite audit has been completed, and they are now working on the draft report. So we should have that to staff sometime in December for our review and to council in January. It also includes our carryover appropriations, our 2019-20 first-quarter numbers, proposed staffing changes, citywide fee schedule update, the 2020-21 kickoff, and our recommendations for this evening. Just a review of what we've done so far in 2018-19. The city council adopted the 2018-19 budget on June 19th, 2018. We had the carryover appropriations were added to the budget in September of 2018. The council officially accepted the 2017-18 annual audit report on October, on April 16th. Immediately after receiving that report, the council suspended contributions to the Equipment and Replacement Fund. Council transferred some CIP projects funded by General Fund, directed department and directors to prepare realistic year-end revenue estimates. And the council adopted various policies and code updates. What they adopted, or what you adopted, was a fiscal sustainability policy, including setting the standards for budget development, revised the budget fund, the fund balance policy, setting on a minimum of 17% of expenses, which is two months' worth, and reaching that goal by 2028, a tiered approach to that. Approved inter-fund borrowing policy to cover year-end deficits. The council adopted a balanced budget for 2019-20. We, council adopted an all-inclusive citywide fee schedule, and updated its purchasing code, and revised the business license code. Our work is not done, still to come. We will be bringing you a revised purchasing policies and procedures. It's a companion to the purchasing code, an updated travel policy, updated credit card use policy. And internally, we will be preparing a new budget preparation manual. A little bit about the news article that was put out last week, or looking at the high-risk cities of which San Gabriel was identified as one. We were not told before it came out, so we all got the information at the same time. But we've done a little research into it since then. What they are looking at is the cash positive, cash position and liquidity of the city, the debt burden, financial reserves, revenue trends, and retirement obligations. Obviously, we know we have the cash position liquidity problem. The debt burden, we are not in any risk there, we don't have any bonded debt. What they didn't look at was how we pay for our retirement obligations. Because they rated as high risk for those retirement obligations without looking further into how it's paid for. And this is what the state usually does, they just kind of give a first glance of what the report is, and then they dig into it later. Looking to see how they go about doing this, or what the process from here is, is they make the initial identification. And again, we have not been told that we are under, we're gonna be reviewed. The ones that we have seen online now are looking at the 2016-17 audit, so they haven't even looked at last year's audit. After they make that initial identification, they establish formal contact. They hold an entrance conference, they visit the local city to gather information and documents. They hold an initial assessment meeting with them. If they satisfy that everything is going on the, is progressing, that the city understands the problems and they're fixing it, and they're seeing progression, then they write a exit letter and close down the audit. They submit their audit proposal to the joint legislative audit committee to see where they want to go from there. And if everybody is, is happy with progress that the city has made, they just close it down and there's no further review of that. If they don't see that the city has taken action or that they don't have a way out, that's when they come in and start looking at doing a audit for the city.
Paula, can I interrupt first just a second? This joint legislative audit committee, if it gets to that point, is this a body of the legislature then?
Yes.
And what powers does this committee have?
I believe they just have the authority to require an audit be performed.
Require?
An audit by the state, not our own internal auditors. So they come in and they do their own audit, they charge you for it. We've heard up to like $200,000 to do a very extensive audit and then give you a list of things of what you need to do.
So I was told it was appointed by governor.
Yes.
That's great, so, so just to make the poor poorer, I guess. Okay, thank you.
That was actually my thought, so, yes. But I think with all the things that the council has taken action on and that we have alleviated some of our fund balance deficit this year, I think we're on the right trend and will be able to satisfy the state. Can't promise that, but I think that you've taken a lot of action to fix it. Onto the 2018-19 unaudited preliminary data. As I said, we have already submitted all the information to the auditors. They've done their field review, they didn't have any questions at the time, so now we'll just see what they come back for their audit. I have lots of numbers for you tonight, but I promise not to go over every single one of them. Just taking a look at the preliminary fund balances, these are the major operating funds. The general fund is the first one on the list here. We started the fiscal year with our negative $2.6 million. We ended 2018 with a, 1819, with a negative $1.8 million. So we actually increased our financial position or bettered our position by $756,000. The retirement fund started with $1.9 million, it is now down to $1.6 million. So we used $264,000 for the year. Again, the sewer fund is both a operational fund and a capital project fund, so you'll see it on both slides. It started with 4.3, ended with 5.5, and increased its position. Mission Playhouse, well, if all goes well, or it did go well, $2 more. And that is because this year, when we did the transfer from the general fund to that fund, rather than transferring what was actually budgeted, we just transferred what was needed to make it whole for the year. And then Community Service Activity Fund is 138,000 to 146. Fleet Services, we go with, and risk management, we go with working capital rather than fund balance because it holds assets and long-term liabilities. The Fleet Services pretty much held its own, risk management. We spent a million dollars more than we had estimated coming in because some of the premiums that we had came in higher. These are the transportation and structure-related fund balances. Gas tax, we think will end this year with a $5.6 million. Sewer, the 5.5, and on down the list, development impact with a 5.2. Prop A will end, we ended this year with $1 million. If you remember, we are selling that for general fund and restricted money. So we'll even have some money left over after that. Prop C money, 1.7, measure R and measure M. We did have some deficit fund balances again this year. Last year, again, the general fund was $2.6 million, is now $1.8 million. So it increased or increased its financial position by $700,000. It did, in the year, have an overall $9.5 million from other funds. And I'll talk about that more in a minute. Mission Playhouse, again, has a, the same deficit balance it had before, and its cash position was a negative 117, so it had to borrow that from another fund as well. Same with the SLASA grant fund. It improved its position this year, it was negative 77,000. We got some extra money and at the end of the year to bring it down to a negative 24,000. When the state has extra money, they kind of give it to the cities at the end of the year. So we think that in the next year, that should come out, and $24,000 is not too much to worry about at this point. The successor agency had the negative fund balance of $181,000. We tracked that back down, and way back when the agencies were shutting down, there was a posting of some interest that the state disallowed. So we had to back that out and close it up into the general fund, which is why the reduction to the deficit was only $700,000. If we hadn't had to close out that $181,000, we actually finished better in the general fund by almost $900,000. The little note down at the bottom, the cash fund deficit. The general fund at the end of the year had a negative cash balance of nearly $3 million. But because of the way we have to book the restricted asset for the loan that we have for the public works facility, we end up having to actually borrow $9.5 million to be able to close the books. It's an entry that happens on June 30th and is reversed on July 1, and was approved in your inter-fund borrowing policy. Just taking a look at the general fund. When we adopted the budget in June, in June 2018, we had a beginning fund balance estimated at $411,000 and estimated that we would end the year with a positive $3 million. When the audit came out, we had the negative $2.6 million. We had carryover for prior year capital projects, a $2.4 million, so we would have ended the year at the negative $2.8 million. The final budget, when we started to remove some things out of the budget, came out to the negative 2.6 to start with, and then we got that down to being a negative... the negative two point six to start with, and then we got that down to being a negative six hundred and fifty-seven thousand. We still knew that some of our revenue and expenditure estimates were not quite where they should be, so our final numbers came out to the ending number there with the negative one point eight million dollars. Taking a look at the categories of how we came for revenue, General Fund revenue. We finished the year ninety-nine percent of what we had estimated for year-end. The amount that we finished from the budget was ninety-one percent, but the year-end estimate is where it really shows how well we did with our estimates. The Taxes category came out to ninety-nine percent of what we had estimated. The Intergovernmental came out a little higher, but the dollar value is a lot less. Licenses and Permits at ninety-nine percent. Use of Money and Property, again, the dollar values are small, so the percentages look higher. But overall, overall, ninety-nine percent. Just to take a look at the taxes that are in the total General Fund revenue. Property taxes, we received ninety-nine percent. Property tax in lieu, which is actually very easy to estimate come mid-year, because we get it in two payments. One comes in January, you just double it, and you're a hundred percent there. The Utility User Tax, we received only ninety-four percent of it. There is a, there was a cost component when some of the utilities did some bundling services, and so that's actually statewide, that we can tell that the utility user tax is down on the communication side. Sales and Use Tax came in at a hundred percent of what we estimated, and on down the list. So at the end of the year, or at the end of the fiscal year, ninety-nine percent of our taxes. This is just how we've compared every year, when the final budget numbers, to the actual numbers of revenue, to see how well we are estimating. And it's not necessarily to say how bad we've done in the past, but to highlight how well we've done this year. With the directors coming in and taking a look at their revenue projections, and really drilling down into those numbers, they were, they were down to point three percent under what they had estimated, and you can't get any closer than that, so they did a great job. Expenditures by Department. Overall, we finished ninety-three percent of the year, and the only department that exceeded its budget was Human Resources. That was due to some significant claims that had to be paid in attorney fees. Without those, they would have finished with, with under budget as well. What this did to our fund balance, we've seen this a couple of times now, where we were on an uptrend and started down, but the last number on the right-hand side there also shows you that we're on our way back up. Hopefully, in the next year or two, you will be back on the upside of that scale. First Quarter Budget Review. Again, these are the major operating sources. We've put in the preliminary fund balance, based on the numbers that we've given to the auditors. When we take a look and see what has been adopted for revenue and expenditures, and put into the carryovers that you have before you tonight, and the amendments, at the end of the year, we think that General Fund will still be one point eight million dollar deficit. We hoping to do better, but for now, that's the budgeted numbers. Retirement Fund, starting at one point six million dollars, it'll go to five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. We are using a lot of that this year, as we expected we would. And Mission Playhouse stays the same, and Community Services Activity stays about the same. Revised Sources and Uses for the Transportation Funds. The numbers on your left are the estimated ending balances for next fiscal year. The ones with the little asterisk are corrected numbers from your report, but they are all in the positive going forward at the end of two thousand nineteen, twenty. These are the first quarter revenues by Fund for the major operating funds. General Fund is at ten percent, is at eleven percent for this year. Last year, is it ten percent? We don't get a lot of our revenues in at the beginning of the year. A lot of them are either accrued back, or they just don't come in until, I mean, property taxes don't come in until December, so we are always significantly low, as most every other city is. The Retirement Fund, again, we don't get the property tax money coming in until December, so that will always be low. The Sewer, again, is a part of the property tax. Mission Playhouse, the four percent last year, sixteen percent this year. We've changed the way we do some accounting. In the, in the past, we did the transfer from the General Fund to the Mission Playhouse at the end of the year. Now we're doing it per month, on an equal basis, so it kind of straightens out their revenue source, and the other ones are just coming in as, as expected. On the expenditure side, General Fund is twenty-two percent expended at twenty-five percent of the year, so we're a little behind, or a little below, where we would be, if we were straightlining it. Last year, we were at twenty-one percent. Retirement Fund, this year, we're at twenty-four percent. Last year, eighteen, that's because of the amount, the higher amount that we are taking in this year. And also, we had another accounting change, where we were having to do a catch-up at the end of the year, and now we have smoothed that out and made it an actual payment every month, so we don't get surprises at the end of the year. The Sewer Fund is within line of the twenty-five percent. Same with the Mission Playhouse and all the other funds. The Risk Management Fund is at ninety-six percent this year versus thirty-two percent last year, because we pay our premiums to the JPIA at, on July one. And in the past, we've been paying the payment on July one, but we've been putting it in kind of a holding account, and only allocating it to the fund a month at a time. But since it's a payment that's due on July one, we, now we're booking it on July one, and you see how much we've actually paid. Just looking at the General Fund. When we adopted the budget, we anticipated a ninety-six thousand dollar balance. The first quarter amendments will have, there's a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars that will be carried over from capital projects and special projects from the eighteen, nineteen year that need to go forward. The adjusted total puts us at twenty-three thousand dollars below, or a deficit budget, and then the amount on the left is just the amount percent as of September thirtieth. So you can see the total revenues were eleven percent, but expenses twenty-two percent, and again, that's typical for cities. First Quarter Revenues by Category. Taxes are five percent. As I said, most of the taxes are either accrued back to the prior fiscal year, or they don't come in until December or January, so again, they're always going to be low. Everything else is coming in pretty much standard going forward for that. This is the tax category for those, and again, it's just going forward, last year to this year, is pretty standard, and most of these revenues don't come in until first quarter, I mean, mid-year, sorry. Taking a look at first quarter expenditures. We're at twenty-five percent of the year, so everyone should be around twenty-five percent. The only one that is above that, I'm sorry, is the City Council, but the reason for that is all of your dues and subscriptions and membership dues and all those type things are usually paid at the beginning of the year. So your League of California Cities and all those type things get paid the first part of the year, so it shows you a little bit higher, but you're still within the range, and looking at all the other ones, you're below the twenty-five percent, so you're still good. Overall, we're twenty-two percent spent at the year, at twenty-five percent. We have some carryover appropriations. Every year, when we close out the books, we take a look at all the capital improvement program budgets, and see how much we have spent versus how much has been appropriated over the years, and then carry that forward till the next fiscal year. In the past, it's been done administratively, but since it is amending your budget, we're bringing it to you tonight as an appropriation to your budget. But again, it's something that's been done every year. We're looking at adding thirteen point six million dollars across all funds, and then the amendment for the fifty-one thousand dollars is for the ballot outreach program, and that's just showing up because it's being transferred from General Fund to the special project funds where it's being paid from. And a complete list of all these projects, if you want to know what they are, are in your companion document that was attached to the staff report, on page ten and eleven. In this one. It's part of the document you have back there. We have some budget adjustments before you tonight. The General Fund is looking to move the election savings from the City Clerk's budget to the contingency budget. We're recommending allocating ten thousand dollars to the City Clerk for some of their training and membership dues, and overtime, that wasn't able to be put into the budget when presented back in June. We're transferring the fifty-one thousand dollars that had been discussed to council, I believe, last council meeting, from the General Fund to the Special Project Fund as part of our processing of how we do the special projects. And then we're recommending transferring the rest to contingency of a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. We're also requesting that the City Council authorize the City Manager to transfer those funds from contingency to the departments that needed for the pending legal settlement and/or the unresolved negotiation costs that are coming forward. Again, in the special capital projects, we're appropriating the fifty-one thousand dollars as a revenue and expense for that money that's coming from the General Fund to that fund for processing. And then the Retirement Fund, and your staff reported, said that we were going to increase the revenue estimate by a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, but we neglected to put it into the resolution, so we will just bring that back at mid-year. We have some recommended staffing changes within the Finance Department. We're looking at deleting the Revenue Collections Administrator, which is vacant, and changing it to a Revenue Services Specialist position, reducing the salary a little bit, changing his duties around, and leaving the staffing at that point unchanged. Then we're also looking at reassigning a Vacant Management Analyst position in the Finance Department over to the City Manager's position. That position has been in Finance since two thousand nine, it's been vacant for two years, and it just doesn't serve a purpose in our department, and the City Manager indicated that he has some special projects that he would like some help on, and the position would be moved over there. It is currently unfunded, it would remain unfunded, but would be considered for funding at some time in the future. Overall, staffing does not change based on these recommendations, and remains at a hundred and ninety-eight full-time positions. We have a citywide fee schedule update. We'll be bringing this back to you for consideration at a future date, but we did want to discuss what's coming forward. We're recommending the following changes, of removing the candidate filing fee that we had just put in in September. It turns out, it has to be done by ordinance rather than a resolution, so we will be backing it out of this and bringing it forward later as, with ordinance. We want to include the late fees for the after-school programs that we are already collecting. This is just documenting what we're doing. Adding a travel guide subscription for six dollars, and including the existing location fees for filming permits. Again, they were already included in there, adopted in previous years, but they left off the schedule. We want to adopt FEMA rates for vehicle and equipment use for building purposes. When somebody damages one of our light poles, or runs into a street sign or something, and we bill them for that, we bill them for the replacement, we want to also be able to bill them for the cost of our equipment used to do that. Right now, we don't have a mechanism to do that, but FEMA does publish rates every year, and so we just want to adopt those, kind of in the same vein that we connect, we adopted LA County building fees. Want to add a new fee for confiscation of signs in public right-of-way. Public Works does have to go around, Neighborhood Services goes around, it has to collect signs that were illegally put up in the right-of-way. It is a cost to the city, and so we want to recoup those costs. And then we also want to talk about adding credit card transaction fees for transactions greater than five thousand dollars. Onto the credit card processing. Currently, we accept credit cards for payments for anything less than five thousand dollars. And the city absorbs the cost of this service. In two thousand eighteen, nineteen, it was fifty thousand dollars that General Fund paid. That's why we don't allow anything over five thousand dollars, because it just costs too much. And some of those higher fees are actually deposits, which we have to give back, so we had to pay the fee on it, and we don't get the fee back, so we're actually losing money on some of those transactions. So they are either paid by check or by cash, mostly by check. We're currently evaluating our credit, credit card banking services to get the best rate and compatibility across all of our services. We have the recreation programs accepting through one provider. We have things at City Hall going through a second provider. We have our building permits that have to go through a third provider, and then Business License is through its own provider as well. So we're looking to see if we can consolidate all of those, and get them all, kind of herding the cats there. In that same vein, we want to take a look and see how we want to process going forward. We do want to become customer service friendly. We are rolling out the ability for our residents to pay their fees at other facilities. Right now, when they go to Public Works to pay a permit, they have to get the permit in Public Works, drive over to City Hall, pay the fee, and then go back and get their permit. And we're trying to alleviate that. The same with the building permits, even though we're right across the hall, they still have to get their permit in one area, and then walk across to Finance, get it, and then go back over there and do that. So we want to open it up, and so that it's one-stop. You go get your permit, you swipe your card right there, and you're on your way. And so we thought we'd look at everything all at one time when we're doing that. We wanted to get council's thoughts on if we should expand it to over five thousand dollars, and if so, if we should charge for that. And then also, we had one of our employees come and make a suggestion that, you know, in the times that we're looking at cutting costs, why are we paying for the fees at all? We can pass those fees on to the resident coming in to pay their parking fee, or their building permit, or whatever. It's not real typical at most cities, but it can be done. So we're looking for direction from the council on that. Onto our budget kickoff for two thousand twenty, twenty-one, it's just right around the corner. Just thought you were done with one, and now you're on to the next. The two thousand twenty, twenty-one budget process mirrors what we used for the latter half of two thousand nineteen, twenty. We will have full year-end expenditures, estimates for expenditures this year. In the nineteen, twenty year, we were only able to do revenue estimates, but we will have the departments do both revenue and expenditure estimates this year. The City Manager has already directed that we will have a no-growth budget at this point to present to the City Council. And if the city is successful in getting their ballot initiative through and increasing the sales tax, the, we'll have a separate plan prepared and presented to the City Council on the uses of that. The two thousand twenty, twenty-one guiding principles, as part of the fiscal sustainability policy, we're to bring these guiding principles to you each year. Because we did those last year, kind of in the later half of the process, they're still valid for this year, so we are actually just using those as a, again, to submit to you unchanged from the two thousand nineteen, twenty process. Some of the highlights of those are the city balance, the budget must balance. It will maintain prudent reserves, and that's our goal, and it, its base budget will be based on realistic estimates and expenditures, and we will make all of our financial decisions publicly. The Budget Calendar kicks off with November fifth tonight. The council meeting to review the year-end and first quarter information. On December eighteenth, we will have a Budget Central launch with staff. On January seventh, or the twenty-first, we'll return to City Council with acceptance of the two thousand eighteen, nineteen CAFR. On February twelfth, we'll come back to the council with a mid-year budget review. March seventeenth, we'll have another council meeting that will do the two thousand twenty, twenty-one preliminary revenue overview, tell you how we're looking. By May first, we'll budget, we'll have the budget documents delivered to the City Council, and May fourth to the eighth, we'll have individual council member budget briefings, like we did this year. May twelfth, we have set aside for the study session for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one operating and CIP budget presentations, and June second or the sixteenth, for the public hearing to adopt those budgets. That's it.
Great, thank you very much, Paula. Very much appreciate the detailed staff report here, and our agenda materials, as well as the presentation here, especially with all of the cool animations and things. And I, so, yeah, I guess council members have questions for Paula? I'm sure many of us have a lot, so we'll just take our turns. Council member, really, I'll, you can go ahead and start.
Well, mine's is really simple. So regarding this audit, you know, high-risk audit, how can we satisfy the auditor? Because number one, I guess, is because the, our cash position, liquidity, but we tied up our money, twenty millions, and I believe in CDs and other accounts. Can we change to some kind of liquid accounts?
We have been actually, as those CDs mature, we've been calling them in, and then sending the money up to LEAF, so it's very liquid. The one that we can't do is the one that's for, that is collateral for the loan that we have.
Right.
We have looked at that, City Manager and I have taken a look at that, and met with some other people. There are some options that we can take a look at, and probably next year. There are some options that we can take a look at, and probably next year would be the time to do that, when we know more about how the finances are and what they're looking. But there are some options that the city can take a look at.
Right.
As far as the state goes, they have not notified us that they're looking at us officially. When they do, and if they come to meet, then what we have to do is show them what we have done.
Okay, so do you expect them to come visit us in spring?
I don't know when they will do it, but from what I'm looking at, they're still looking at CAFRs two years ago, so.
That's right.
Yeah, I don't know if or when they will come.
So another question is the retirement obligation, and San Gabriel is doing so much better. You know, we have about, what, almost $8 million every year from the property tax revenue. So how can we also satisfy their question? We don't have that kind of issue.
I think what they did when they took a look at it is they just went with a quick review of your general fund, and they didn't do a exhaustive research or analysis of how the operation, or how the financial operations of the city work. So I don't think they looked at the retirement tax fund that we have to realize that it's coming in. I think this was just a cursory review of going down the checklist, and we met something on their checklist, and they published it from that.
Yeah. Well, reason, you know, I'm very concerned because just recently, there's a bank, they're writing a report, actually, they promote San Gabriel Valley in economic developments, and especially they want to promote city of San Gabriel. And as, well, they saw this news and asked me the question. I said, "Well, it's not quite accurate, but, you know, we're okay." Especially when we built the third hotel beginning next year, we expect another TOT maybe one or two millions a year, and other mixed-use projects, so. But the public perception is very important, because now he, he doesn't want to write the report now, because he thinks, "Well, yeah, you guys are at a high risk." So I, yeah, I don't know how to explain to him, "Hey, this is, this is not real San Gabriel," so.
We don't have anything to respond to right now, because we have not been notified by the state that we're actually even being looked at. So the only thing they can do is take a look at our CAFR, it is publicly available, and take a look at it and do their own analysis. I mean, it is all very clear.
Okay, okay, thank you. Oh, about the credit card, so are we going to have a separate discussion about that?
Well, I was hoping to get input tonight, so.
Oh, tonight?
We can discuss that tonight.
Oh, okay. So why we're paying $50,000 for the fees?
We pay a portion of every transaction, same as anywhere you go, when you use your credit card, the merchant is having to pay a fee. For ours, it happens to come out to about $50,000 a year.
What is the range of CC processing fees?
I think our average was between, because we have so many different cards, there is 2.3% to 3.5%.
3.5%? Okay, well.
Well, yeah, because in the past, I'm not sure it's lower. We have, you know, long history of business relationship with Citizen Business Bank. I don't know if they offer a lower rate, but I'm sure with the city's, you know, deposits, with their bank, I'm sure they can lower the rate.
We're looking at all of them. Some of the systems we have require us to go through certain providers, so we're looking to see if we can consolidate those as well.
Okay.
Merchant banks and depository institutions are not necessarily, offer all the same types of services, but in any case, councilmember Gonzo.
Thank you, Mayor Pooh. Paula, I just want to thank you and Mark and your staff for this report. As disappointing as our fiscal status is currently, I still do see us a light at the end of the tunnel, and I appreciate you uncovering information that is more enlightening to us of how we need to move forward and our fiscal responsibility, and we didn't always have that. But now the book's kind of opening, and I do, I do see our future very good with a lot of upcoming projects, and so I'm not giving up. And I just want to personally thank you for all your time and effort that you've put into this and to bring this, you know, to us, so we can see more clearly what we need to do and how we need to go about getting us in better fiscal shape. So thanks, Paula, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzo. Vice Mayor Machaca.
Hello, Paula. Thank you again for just constantly raising the bar, and well appreciated. I'll just start with some overall just observations. You know, when I first looked at it, I was trying to organize it in my mind, because, you know, it talks about budget. It's a general fund, it shouldn't include the CIP. But what I would like to see maybe going forward is maybe keeping it a little more simple, because if you look at the overall, we have last year's budget information, which we've already kind of gone through it, you know, significantly, and then we had current year budget, then we had a CIP update, then we had the next year budget, then we had the staffing issues, and then fee schedules, and so I would like to see maybe, just maybe some of these items could have been standalone, so we can really kind of flush through them and go through them. And I think sometimes, in an effort to be transparent, when you add too much information, I think people can get a little lost and maybe feel like, "Okay, well, what's going on here?" So that would just be my suggestion, is keeping it simple, keeping it very, very focused, because it's just the first quarter, so I know in three months, you know, we haven't even gotten our tax, our property tax revenues yet, but, you know, three months is pretty basic, very simple, but it's going to get more complicated. So I'm hoping we can just have the time just to focus on the general fund without worrying about other areas, and, you know, others that we can actually have a whole separate discussion about. So that was just my overall observation. I understand that this is a balance, you know, we're trying to obtain a balanced budget, but it's truly not sustainable, so there's going to be some tough decisions ahead, even if everything goes great, because as we know, when we balanced it, there was that one-time revenue item, Prop A. And we were very fortunate, because we had been accumulating over the years, but now we've pretty much drained it. I'm not sure how much we're going to have for just Prop A, maybe $300,000 at most, you know, we were very, or less than that, it's a third of the 750. But it's not an ongoing kind of revenue item. I wanted to ask you, are there any other areas that you've seen that we can possibly use like a Prop A if we decide not to keep it for our own transit needs? Because I know we're getting, what, 75 cents on the dollar at most. Is there anything else out there that possibly we can be using also?
Prop A is the only one that allows us to exchange it, and the reason why we get it, we have to buy it at discount is because it's restricted, so the city that's buying it has the restriction on it. They're not giving us, they're giving us unrestricted money, but they're taking that restriction on to those funds, so that's why they discount it. And there's no other funds that are allowed to be sold that way.
And the Prop A is probably going to be pretty consistent, we're not going to have this windfall of Prop A, so even if we wanted to convert it again, or we wanted to use it for our own personal transit needs, is there anything?
The city has actually sold it every two to three years, so they accumulate it and sell it, and accumulate it and sell it.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yes.
But it's not going to increase all of a sudden?
No. It's based on population and sales tax numbers, so.
Okay, so we won't be able to use that. The other thing I wanted to try to maybe emphasize is that, you know, I hear the talk about, well, you know, one way to reduce expenses is to reduce staffing, because you keep adding staff, and I don't know how to present that in our budget, the fact that, you know, we're still at 198, that whatever additions we have or promotions, it's replacements.
Correct.
Or we rearrange, like, you know, we talked about today, that it's not going to be filled, but moving that position to an area that's more needed, because we're trying to be more efficient in other areas, so kind of frees up a body, but there's still needs in other areas. And so I would like to see somehow, just that emphasis, that, you know, we're maintaining the same staff, we're doing more work, we're, we have so many more work that has to be done. I mean, we've added so many mixed uses, we have to add more housing, but we're still at the same level, and I think that says a lot about our city and about our staff, that they're adjusting. And so, again, I don't know how to kind of crush that little type of sentiments, except for, of course, telling them, but if there was any way we can present that, I think it would be very helpful. Also, I wanted to kind of piggyback on the comment that councilmember Lao said. That article, the information, I was surprised how far it went, the dissemination of the information. I mean, I heard it on a talk radio show, I heard it on TV, I saw the, I think it was the Pasadena Star News, you know, did a publication on it, and so, and if you look at it, and I'm wrong, I know you looked at it even more so, but I mean, first we're dealing with 2016, 2017. That's light years with regards to any city finances. I mean, things just changed so much. And then the fact that they completely ignored our retirement tax, which is, I know, just one element when they talked about the retirement, because all cities have the same issues. Some will go down quicker than others, but we are one of the few cities that have that retirement tax, which is tremendous advantage. And so my question is, is there any way to respond to that type of, you know, promo or lack of promo? Because it's still out there, and I don't know, I'm just trying to understand if there is something we can put on our website or explain it. I mean, Mark and I, you know, Mark's been very good about explaining it to people who have questioned it, you know, we can package that, but I just think we do need to kind of get in front of it, because it's lingering out there. And again, I don't have the answer per se, but he's got some good responses. I know he sat with people and explained it to them, even those who don't maybe aren't as comfortable with numbers, he knows how to simplify it. But I just think we do need to kind of get in front of it, because it's still out there. And then we've been kind of batched together with other cities, and I'm not going to mention, but are not as desirable as San Gabriel, I would say. So I would like to address that somehow head-on. Let's see, let me just kind of go through this. I was going to mention, thank you for responding to my inquiry about the 198,000 that was not in there. So I wasn't sure when we go through the approval, are we going to amend it, or how are we going to address the fact that it wasn't listed?
We actually don't need to. We'll bring that back as part of the mid-year budget. Because it's bringing revenue in, we're not adding expenses associated with that, so we don't need to do anything at this time.
Okay, great. But thank you for responding to that. For the capital improvement program project update, the fact that we may have to pay some additional monies, but I know that Greg and his team are working on it, I would like to see that come back by itself, once you have more information, because especially the bridge, I remember having the groundbreaking, and then I really never heard back, or we just haven't gotten an update. So I think that would just be helpful to, and put him up front, put Greg up front, in the beginning of the city council meetings, so we can all learn, you know, "How is this bridge replacement project taking place? Give us an update." And now with the negotiations with Caltrans, you know, hoping we don't have to use any general fund money, or actually more, probably what we would do is prolong any more payment projects, because we're going to have to take from our payment projects to pay for this bridge.
Right, they were going to allow us to use future SDPL money, and I think it was our intent to bring it back in more detail when we had more information, we just wanted to give council a heads-up of what was going on.
Okay, and I do appreciate it, but it just gets a little cluttery, because you have so many other things that have to kind of keep straight, "Okay, now we're talking about." Then you have the city fee schedule update, that would have been another good one to kind of have as a separate item. Let's see, so we're going to talk a little bit more about the credit card, but I agree, 50,000, I think, is outrageous that we've had to pay that. I mean, that's almost the salary of a full-time person. I like the no-growth budget. That's very prudent. And then under recommendations, the third bullet point had XX under the resolution, so we'll just change that to say 54, I believe.
Yes.
That's the one we were missing. And I think that was all. But thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Machaca. Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the update, Paula. I know we don't have the best situation right now, but we're dealing with it the best that we can. And I appreciate that. I've seen a lot of staff time put in this, a lot of thought, a lot of, you know, just where can we make up these shortcomings? And I think we have a good plan, and I like the fact that it's prudent. We're not taking any really drastic measures, but we're taking very good measures that I think if an auditor came in, they would see, "We've done the best we can with what we have," and the, I'll address the article a little later, but I think that really was, the state did come in and didn't know the whole picture, they just kind of did a drive-by and said, "Uh-huh, there's some numbers missing," and that's it. They never did any detailed analysis, so hopefully we get a chance to fix that. When I looked at the credit card processing, as a, you know, I've been a business owner in the past, and my question for staff is, we've always paid for credit cards, is that part of the fee schedule? So when we're determining our fees, shouldn't that already be factored into our fee includes a certain percentage of credit card processing, or are we not allowed to do that?
We don't, right now, we don't charge the customer.
I understand that, but if, let's say, a $10 fee should include some sort of processing fee. Like, for example, if you own a restaurant, like you said, you go somewhere, you can average, like, a restaurant typically ends up like 2.85, 2.9% is what they actually pay to accept credit cards overall from all their revenue, that's part of the price. Most restaurants don't charge you to use a credit card, it's just included. Some people pay cash, some people pay credit card, people paying cash are getting a little less, people paying credit cards are usually getting miles or whatever they're getting, you know, cash back. So to me, I think it, for a consumer, it's really hard to say, "Oh, our fee is $10, but give us $10.47." It should just be $10.50 then, and then we absorb the credit card fee, because it's already in there. I don't think, so we should maybe just take a look, and I don't know the legality of that, whether we can put that into our fee schedule, because some people are paying cash or check. Do we give them a, do we give them a reduced price if they pay cash or check? So I don't know how to solve that, but it shouldn't be we go after the fact and say, "Oh, yeah, our fee schedule is this, but now you owe us extra because you're using credit card." The one where I would have the concern is the deposits, because we really should, and I can tell you this, when I got credit card refunds, I would always get the credit card fee processing fee back, so I don't know why we're not collecting that. We should be collecting that, we should go back to our processor, and in the end, end of the year, usually you net it out and say, "Here's how much the actual," and they'll give you a detailed lot of every single transaction. Here's the transactions that were reversed, and the fees get reversed too, so they should, we should look into getting, especially on a deposit, that fee should be reversed back to us. So if that's not happening, we should make sure it does happen. Either that, or if someone's making a large fee deposit on a credit card, then they can actually, we know exactly what the credit card fee is on that, that can be held until we get it back, and then if we don't, then the person, that's a convenience fee that that person is charging. So I do think we need to discuss that as a council. We shouldn't be absorbing a deposit, so someone else is getting mileage, they get their whole money back, and the city's paying that way. So some way we have to figure out, but I don't think the answer is to like add a fee on top of a fee or a percentage on top of a fee, it just needs to be an average of what we're getting charged. So I would leave that up to staff, but I think the direction would be figure out what our actual costs are and work it into the fees, or just, that's our cost of doing business, and we know what it is, and we change some of our policies. Getting back to the article, when I read that, I was a little surprised and taken back that we didn't have a better response, because it said, "Well, they might not have looked at this, they may not have." I know that they usually give you 25, 30 minutes to respond, I've been, so what I typically do, because I get calls on these, and I just say, I pass the buck to Jonathan, I say, you know, "Talk to our public information officer." But I, hopefully Christopher, who wrote the article, would give us the courtesy of, "Hey, let us do, give us two, three hours to do some deeper dive. We believe that the state is doing this, this, and this, we can't confirm it, because the state hasn't really contacted us at all." But I would make that very clear, that the state- But I would make that very clear, that the state never contacted the city of St. Gabriel, and it's basing this off what I would call a drive-by. They just came and saw a few numbers, "Oh, you're number eight. We could be number 80, we could be number 180, we could be number one. We don't know because those numbers aren't real. They're not audited." If we gave them, we should, we should make a point when a reporter asks us, saying, "The state doesn't do audited. This is just someone sitting in office in Sacramento, took all these financials and said, 'Ooh, St. Gabriel's number eight.'" We don't know that, but the newspaper makes their money on reporting, you know, and especially when they're local. "Oh, look, look at these cities that aren't doing well." And that's not the case. We have the ability to pay our bills. We have a, like we said, we have a tax dedicated to pensions. Six of the eight categories cited had to do with pensions. So, I'd say right there, six out of those eight categories. The only other concern we really had was liquidity in our general fund, which for our obligations, we're, we're making our obligations, so we have the, we have adequate liquidity. What we don't have is a reserve if there's an emergency. That's where we would have an issue. We've been paying our bills, we'll continue to pay our bills, we project that we'll pay all our bills, and we'll be very financially sound. But the, so we need to be prepared to say, "The issue here is liquidity in case of emergency." Well, if we have an emergency, a true emergency, I would expect there would be FEMA money. We probably wouldn't pay our bills right away because we would not have the ability to. I mean, the banks would be, would be earthquake, something like that, where most people aren't paying bills when their house is flat, right? It takes a while, there's insurance recoveries, there's FEMA, there's a process. So, that should be worked into this article too, that we're making our, we're making our payments. We haven't, we've never missed a payment, we have almost no debt. I mean, it's very limited debt, especially compared to a lot of other cities. We've been very good about not taking debt on. So, these are the type of things that hopefully, we learn from this, and we're prepared the next time someone comes to us, we should at least have a, some of our answers modeled and ready to go. Maybe we fill in with the actual details, but I think just a general plan for communications with media, we should have a lot of these areas covered, like what happens if there's an earthquake? What happens if there is? How is your financial position? Those are things we should just be able to pluck out, correct them, and get it, get it out there. So, it's almost like you're prepared for 90% of the questions they could ask. We have, I wouldn't call it a canned response because we're going to modify it according to the question, but we have that information at the ready, so it makes your life easier, Mark's life easier, Jonathan's life easier. So, my just general statement to that, I was a little disappointed in the response that we only really had a very cursory response, and then I think if we get the chance, we should ask to follow up on that and say, "Hey, we'd really like to amend," and just do, do, do an update, because it's online, and then someone a week from now could see, "Oh, there's been a change. Here's, here's St. Gabriel's official response after looking into the numbers." So, I'd really appreciate that, if we can go back and contact the reporter.
Jonathan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe he sent something that was not published in its entirety.
Okay, yeah, because it's not, I just checked it. Other than that, I really do appreciate the new quarterly update, and I understand that there's a lot of information here. I agree with Council, or Vice Mayor Machaca. I think going to some other agencies, I've been on, you know, boards at other agencies, what, what I would suggest is, the items here that really have no significant variance off of what, what, you know, what we're expecting, we just, we don't need to report on all the line items. If we just got the highlights, like, here's a 10% variance, and it's, we weren't expecting it, but here's why it happened, it would cut this presentation in about a half or a quarter. And the people that really do want to see, it's all there, but we don't have to present it all. I'd just say, a suggestion, you could make this into about less than half the time. Saves you time. You don't need to report on things that are really status quo or really exactly as expected. Just do like a highlights, here's the, here's the eight or 10 things that stand out in this report. I think that would make it a better experience for the public. The people who really do want it will go get it, because everything's there. Like we said, everything's transparent, all the information's there. We should just highlight what stands out. I think that'd be a great way to do it, and it'd save you a lot of headache.
I understand. I, I had to look at everything to go through anyways, and I, I've always, I guess, faulted on this side of giving too much information than too little information, because I don't want anyone to ever be able to say, "I didn't tell them."
No, I, I think that all the information's there, it's just what we highlight in the actual council presentation could be condensed. But overall, it's great information, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. I first want to just say that I agree with my colleagues about a lot of the comments that they made, and there are a couple of points that I do disagree, and I'll, I'll point them out in just a minute. But I also agree with the optimism and share the optimism with my colleagues, because the financial position, while we have the, the general fund, negative fund balance, which is, I think, the biggest issue for us right now, there, there, you know, there, we've made adjustments, and there's, you know, a sales tax measure on the ballot in March, that, all of which will go to address some of these issues. And I want the public to know, and, and the staff, the, the level of seriousness that all of us are taking the situation with, right? All of us here on the council, city management, all of the departments. We've made some spending cuts in the current year to be able to put ourselves in a little bit better financial, fiscal position for the end of this current fiscal year. But as Vice Mayor Machaca had said, and we have said before in some of these budget reviews, the current situation is not sustainable. And even cities like Pasadena, in their ballot argument, when they passed the sales tax measure in June, I believe, November of last year, you know, cited declining revenues and increasing costs. Is one of the, one of the, the first thing they say right there in the ballot argument for why it's necessary just to maintain the city services that, you know, we all, that the, you know, city of Pasadena has come to love and, and expect. So, if a city like Pasadena, you know, citing those things, then, then of course, that's something that affects us here as well. And I think that that's absolutely true. I actually have a lot of questions, so I apologize to everybody. But, but I just wanted to first say though, that I don't think that, you know, I don't, I, I have no sense of doom and gloom at all. I actually think that, that while we are in a serious position, and it needs to be taken seriously, we have also taken many steps to already address the, the situation, and we have a plan going forward on how we will be able to get back to, get into a sustainable situation. Because really, it's all about cash flow. And this is actually something that's, every business needs to, needs to, you know, address. It's one of the like sort of primary business issues. The city of St. Gabriel is not a business, but it is a corporation, a municipal corporation. And so, I think if we look at this from the lens of, you know, of the cash flow, then I think that we will be able to, we'll be able to, you know, we'll be able to see our way through this, and I think we'll be fine. That's why I think also we'll be, I think all of us will be eagerly, you know, awaiting the mid-year update. Because by then, we will have the CAFR, the audited financials for our last fiscal year, and we will have at least half, half of the property tax, you know, revenue that we would expect in December and January. And I think that that point, that touch point is going to be a lot more relevant in terms of how much revenue is collected versus what's budgeted. And also, so it'll give us a better picture of how we're doing as expenditures versus revenues. Again, that's something that I think in the past was never really presented. And, you know, we can ask all the questions that we want up here, but I think that, you know, we really need to focus on that. You know, I have basically two sets of, two categories of questions here. I have three or four clarifying questions about the, in the staff report. And then the second set of questions really relate to line items where we are basically budgeting a certain amount of revenue, but missing that number. Because we're in this situation, for example, when, because we might be expecting and budgeting revenue of 100, therefore, we program spending of 90, but then the actual revenue only is 80. And if that happens over, you know, several years, and you're not told about it, then obviously, you are overspending. So, we need to rectify that situation. And, and where I do disagree to a certain extent is, you know, I, I actually do like this level of detail, and I like the additional touchpoints that Paula and Mark have been able to provide us, the council, because without having this information, how can we make those adjustments? And it's, I think, due to these mid-year adjustments that have already been made, that, you know, we're, we're on the right path. We're on the right path back towards a, a position of fiscal sustainability. So, so I, you know, and I think that, and I, and I truly do believe that, that we are on the right path back towards fiscal sustainability. You know, we have the policies in place, and, you know, I think we'll certainly miss, miss Paula and her work in providing, you know, us this, this level of information and detail. So, that, it's not only the council, but the, the community also understands clearly, you know, transparently what, what the financial position is. And, you know, it just seems like a basic principle that we should be matching our expenditures to the revenue, and not just what we expect or what we thought we would get, but the actual revenue. That's a really kind of no-brainer, basic business principle. So, as far as my questions go, I'll just page turn and, and see if I can't get through this as quickly as possible. It's on page, page two of the staff report, under the section that says, you know, 2018, 19, general fund. There's a sentence here that confused me, which says that there's accounting changes, such as moving retiree health from the risk management fund to the general fund. And then, and says, and changing the corresponding transfer from the retirement fund. So, but it was my understanding that retiree health was always charged to the retirement fund. Is that not correct?
It is. But in the past, the expense was in the risk management fund, and then the transfer was made from the retirement fund to the risk management fund. This year, we moved it so that the retiree expense is in the general fund, and then the transfer from the retirement fund is to the general fund.
Okay, got it. So, ultimately, it does come from the retirement fund?
Yes.
On page eight of the staff report, I think in general too, I, I just wanted to make sure I completely understand this budget carryover for capital improvement program. Because even in the presentation and in reading the materials, it's not intuitively clear to me what's going on here. This, I guess, the, and what, so could you explain, you know, what this is? This, the, the carryover of all the, I mean, I understand the CIP generally, and that generally speaking, you know, we might even have as much as $20 million worth of projects that have been appropriate, but not yet executed.
Correct.
And therefore, the, you know, the, the money hasn't been spent. But for each of those projects, we wouldn't go out to bid unless they're fully funded. So, the money is there, but the, I guess, the expenditure hasn't happened yet. So, can you, if that's, you know, given that as my sort of big, third-grade level understanding of what's the, what happens in the CIP year after year, you know, can you explain why we need to do these carryover? And is it a charge? Or, because it seems like we're increasing appropriations, and it's by a significant amount.
Correct. So, just for example, the city council approves a project this year for a million dollars. By the time we go out to bid and start the process and all of that, and the construction even starts, or we don't get to award the construction before the end of the year, they still have a budget of a million dollars, but they haven't spent anything yet. The fiscal year ends, and the appropriation goes away. But council already authorized that million dollars, so we need to bring it forward into the New Year's for appropriations. So, you're just bringing that million dollars to the next year of unspent money. If they spent $500,000 this year, and they had $500,000 unspent, then we would bring the $500,000 forward as an appropriation.
So, that's interesting, because I was never, you know, explained to us before. I, I did, we, I, I never had the understanding that an appropriation in a prior fiscal year needed to be re-appropriated in the, in the next fiscal year if we, if you didn't expend it during that fiscal year.
They all lapse at year-end.
They all lapse at year-end.
At June 30th, all the appropriations lapse, and if you don't carry them forward, then they're gone.
So, these carryovers don't have any effect on cash? This is simply appropriations of, of funds that have already been accumulated and, and set aside for certain projects?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful in that respect. With respect to the Delmar Bridge project, it's interesting to see an update of that in here. There's a sentence here that reads, you know, that there are a couple of different scenarios that LA County, you know, provided, showing Caltrans funding increases of 30% or 40%, which result in estimated city obligations of $574,000 and change, and $143,000 and change respectively. Based on past LA County negotiations, LA County anticipates a Caltrans funding increase somewhere between 30% and 40%. Hi, Greg. When will we know? Because this is a big difference, right? We're talking about $430,000 difference. And what if Caltrans just says, you know, "No, forget about it." You know, "You're going to get 15%," I guess is what something, or I think is one of the numbers that was floated before.
You're correct. We are at 15% today. That's how we entered the project. This project was awarded to LA County to do the design of the bridge, and then to do all the construction administration of the bridge. And they have a very fixed rigid system in their fee schedules, and it's, it's definitely on the high side. But the way it was set up with funding, Caltrans provides a certain percent of the contract amount, which came in about $5,000 in construction. And all the fees are kind of based on that, and the reimbursements are based off that. And we move forward saying, "We'll accept the 15%." It's called HBP, I'm not sure what that means, reimbursement from Caltrans. So, in this scenario today, if we get to the finish line, we just got these updates from the county's program managers of 1.2 million is how much in the hole we are today with 15%. They've assured us that, a couple of things. We said, "This is terrible news," and they said, "Yes, we're cutting back, and we're not, we're trying to charge this job as little as we can and get to the finish line as frugally as possible." I wish that was the day-one attitude. But they said, "It's completely normal to go back when they have the final tally of what the job really cost." And this was more expensive than a normal bridge, because we spread it out over two years and essentially two bridges. So, that takes a lot more time and more administration. Then there's the normal change orders of what you find when you dig up the ground, and so, their contingency got spent. And so, it just keeps going up and up. And when they have that final tally, they go back to Caltrans and try and renegotiate a higher reimbursement ratio. So, we're at 15% today, and they're forecasting that's, we have to kick up 1.2 million if that's where it stays. But their experience is, it generally falls between 30 and 40% when they go back for renegotiations. And those numbers, I do have, well, they're in the staff report.
Yeah, they're, they're here in the staff, we don't have to go over it now.
We expect it to fall somewhere within those two years. And to, I guess, ease the burden on us, we won't have to come up with a payment. They put a claim against future revenue of SDPL funds. And we currently get around in the order of $600,000 a year in those funds. So, it'll, it'll wipe out one year of SDPL funds if it moves forward as expected.
Depending on how much we have to, we have to pay, right?
Correct.
And what Caltrans is covering.
And I think that's going to happen around December, January, because the project is winding down.
Do you know when it's going to be completed?
It was December, and now it's January.
January?
Yeah.
So, I guess your answer is just that Caltrans regularly will just, you know, pony up and say, "Sure, well, we'll give you extra money to finish that bridge?"
Correct.
Okay. All right, let's hope that's the case then, because that's a big difference for us between 1.2 and like $143,000.
Sure.
You know, I don't want to have to use any more STPL funds than, than, than the necessary, obviously, to, to get this done, because like, you know, actually, not even a project that we, we, the city, really wanted to get done. You know, we're, we're told by other agencies that it's an 85-year-old bridge, and this and that, blah, blah, blah. Causes such inconvenience on Delmar and the Focus Plaza. But, but in any case, yeah, if it gets done in January, that's great. And you say, "We'll know December, January, how much our contribution will need to be."
I'll have to follow up on that, but the bridge will be, will have I'll have to follow up on that, but the bridge will be, we'll have the numbers as far as the construction costs and the county's costs to us. They'll, they'll have everything ready to go negotiate. I don't know how long that actually takes, but I would say in December, January, they are, they are ready to go back to Caltrans and negotiate. I don't think it takes very long, though.
I guess in the meantime, we can actually then defer or delay our, payment of our share?
I, I don't think there's really, there's, there's not cash out of our pocket. It just, we're, we're fine. We don't owe anything except possibly future grant revenue.
Okay. Can we make sure this, uh, this issue is included in the mid-year, mid-year update?
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. I think the last clarification question I had was related to page 11 of the staff report on the filming fees. And I think this is in community development because it says here, we charge $150 per day for parks and playgrounds, $125 per day for other government facilities. So does this relate to, I mean, this include for like, say filming? Actually, I just had some producers ask me about filming locations in, in San Gabriel. And I know like, for instance, Modern Family filmed in the Mission Playhouse Plaza. That was a really fun and, fun and funny episode. But these fee, these licensing fees or these filming fees seem to be relatively low.
I'm not sure when they were last reviewed. These are the ones that were approved a few years ago and they were just left off of the last schedule. So this is bringing it forward.
Good morning, Mayor Poo, members of the city council. I'm Amina Chaparian. I did want to add, we are not making any changes at this time to the fees we have in front of you this evening. However, we are actually looking at the entire filming program and looking to see if there are some opportunities that we may be missing. So I think the questions you're asking are right on target because in the next few months, you're going to be hearing more about filming because we have had more inquiries in the last few months. I think you may have noticed in some of your council updates, we've had some new filming happening in the city. We've been going out and networking with a lot of folks in the industry to try and promote the city of San Gabriel. So I anticipate in the next few months, having a greater discussion with council regarding filming and ways that we can expand the program so it becomes more of a way for us to not only promote the city, but actually bring in some neat opportunities that we may be missing now. So I think we will be reviewing these fees more closely. We have a staff member who is actually currently meeting with other cities who have extensive filming programs. And tomorrow, we've got a group of staff going out to a neighboring city to get a better understanding of how they're doing their filming program. So there will be more coming. We are not making any changes at this time, but I do anticipate as part of our next budget discussions, you will be hearing more about filming.
Okay, thank you, Arminé. Just a quick question, though, with respect to cost recovery. If a film, you know, a production is coming in and doing filming, but they need additional support, security, whether it's fire or police, are we separately charging them for those services?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We are, and we are working with the production company so they understand the extent of what the impact of the filming will be in the city.
Or public work support, things like that? Closing a street? Doing large explosions in front of the playhouse?
Safe explosions.
Well, yeah, well, if they do want an inside the playhouse, then we can make them pay for all, the cost of the seat replacement. That will take care of that, they'll take care of that CIP project. Well, I'll just also note, though, that, you know, Film LA, which you know, you know, they have, you know, ready, set, packaged, that's ready to go. People just go there, one-stop shop to do the licensing. And I think these filming opportunities are, are a great opportunity for us as a community to be able to tell our story. We have so many beautiful and historic locations that, that could be used for film or TV or even just still shots. And, but at the same time, I do feel like we're selling ourselves short if we're, if our licensing fees are so low, you know, that, that, you know, that we could be, you know, a more significant revenue generator, I think.
And I think that's what we're looking into at this time. We do think that there could be a revenue source that continues to come in that's greater than what we're currently receiving because first and foremost, our filming program has been a great program, but there have been times where we haven't really explored ways to make it actually an economic development program. Some cities have and they're, and they're seeing the return on that investment. We think we can do the same. For example, the city of South Pasadena has a great database that they maintain of properties in their city that you can utilize for filming. Our staff has actually met with them. We're meeting with other cities. We're reaching out to folks in the industry. We've been working with a few production companies, showing them different sites. And in the last three months, we've seen how we're getting, we're getting calls because we've got some really unique locations. But we know that the entire program needs to, to be looked at more carefully and we need to look to see exactly what that revenue could and should look like. So we, we anticipate bringing some, bringing something back to you soon.
Thank you, Arminé. Appreciate it. So finally, I'll get to some of the areas where, for me, are the, the primary concern is because it's the reason why we're in this situation and why I want to get greater detailed understanding, is there something that is happening that is causing us to miss those revenue expectations? Or programmatically, is there something that we can do to, you know, to make sure we are collecting and/or, you know, billing and charging for the revenue that, you know, we, we expected to get? So, and it goes across departments, so this might, you know, require a couple of team members to come forward. But the first one then I wanted to ask about, you know, is all, these all relate to the 18, 19 fiscal year and are these are based on the unaudited numbers. But, but, but I think it's important for us to understand what, you know, what the situation is, what's going on. And then that, obviously, because that situation carries forward to the current fiscal year, it will carry forward to the next fiscal year. And maybe, Arminé, you might have to come back. I'm sorry, the first one is under, is the, under licenses and permits. I'm on page four of the 2018, 19 preliminary data, unaudited licenses and permits. There's a big shortfall here between what was budgeted of 1.45 and then the actuals, which was like 710. So it was like 739, you know, in the hole or, or, or less than what we were expecting. And if we were programming other expenditures against that revenue, then obviously, you know, we didn't, we didn't match revenues and expenditures. So maybe you could clarify that?
Well, the 2018, 19 budget numbers that are shown here as adopted revenue estimates were prepared and estimated by the prior finance director. The department directors were not involved in it. The second column over where the year-end estimate is, is where the directors were involved in it around mid-year, around, well, February, March. And they dug into those numbers and took a look at it and looked at their history and, what was coming in and, and how things were working and they prepared the year-end estimates. And that's where we were only 0.3% off of the year-end estimate numbers.
I see.
And that's the, the same with all of those numbers.
And adding to that, that second column from the right, that's the delta that I think is more pertinent because that's the delta, the 39,625. That's the delta between what Arminé and her team actually estimated versus the year-end revenue. The delta to the far right, the 739,000, that was where we started. So next year's revenue numbers or the year, excuse me, that we're currently in, 19, 20, are more based on the, the $750,000 number, not the 1.450 number.
I appreciate that and, you know, obviously, it's always better to have more accurate projections and expectations. But at the same time, in that fiscal year, we did still program against the, you know, 1.45 million instead of what was actual, more in the 700,000 range. So again, that's a, you know, $739,000, you know, gap that needs, somehow needs to be filled or backfilled and as, and part of, you know, the now 1.9, you know, million, you know, general fund deficit at year end. I guess at 18, 19 year end is what we're saying or?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you for that. Second one here, same page, parking fines, fines and forfeitures. That was budgeted at 900,000, actual was, what, 704? And I noticed that that, that line item of revenue was also significantly reduced. Maybe this is a question for the chief, which, you know, frankly, as a resident, I don't mind if, you know, parking tickets are not being issued or whatever, but as a mayor and council member, it's a concern because if, if there's going to be a 400, $500,000 shortfall in that revenue line item, that's another gap that we need to fill somehow. And, and again, another gap that we potentially, we programmed against, but are not, you know, actually getting the revenue for.
It pretty much has the same answer. The first column were prepared almost exclusively by the prior director.
I'll add, because Paula wasn't here at the time, but you'll recall that at the beginning of that fiscal year, and chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but our parking operator walked off the job basically because they wanted a higher rate than we were willing to pay. So unfortunately, we went over two months without having the same enforcement level.
Chief, can you provide an update on that? Because I, we haven't heard an, an update regarding renegotiations with Intercon. I have seen them around. Don't know if they're, you know, in protest not writing any tickets, but.
Mr. and Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Indeed, we are still using Intercon, but we did go through that period where Intercon was having some, we were having some contractual issues with them and there was a significant period where there was no revenue generated by them and their services. You're going to have a staff report coming to you. I believe it's scheduled for the next council meeting on the 19th, where we're going to be making a recommendation as to how to move forward with our parking services. We'll discuss Intercon, other parking agencies, as well as the potential to put our own employees on parking services, hire our own services.
Okay.
But that will come to you on the 19th. That is now being reviewed. So from a revenue perspective, that was the major glitch. I think that we, we pared down and started to be, get accurate numbers as to what we thought it would be based on years past. We did a deep dive into it and I think we're going to get a much more accurate depicting of that as we move forward on the budget process. That was a significant hit, that lack of revenue from that piece, but we think we've rectified that situation.
And what is a realistic expectation as terms of parking fines revenue per, each year now at the, currently going forward?
I don't have those numbers in front of me. I'm sorry, I'll have to bring that back to you. But we did do a, a deep dive into that and I'll make sure to bring that back the next time for the council.
Okay, so I guess we would perhaps at the next, this, that then on the 19th, be able to get a sense then of, of where we are with that kind, with that type of revenue?
Yes, sir. It'll be a, a complete report with all of that.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate that. Let's see here. Next page, which is page five, public safety. I was surprised to see a big difference, a big delta in the, in fire services revenue line item, 121-3631. Is that all, maybe the answer to all my questions is Tom did it and, you know, didn't check with anybody else, pulled the number out of the air and then, you know, that's why we have a, you know, a big, a big miss. Is that?
The better number to use would be the year-end estimates because those were prepared by the directors.
Would you like to add to that?
I would just say to that end, Chief Wallace did a deep dive into those numbers and could not figure out why those numbers were projected so high. And the numbers that he's come up with for this year end and for next year are realistic numbers.
Okay. Let me see here. I'll move on to special revenue funds. Looks like there was, you know, in the Office of Traffic Safety, the OTS grant. Now, why would we have budgeted 100 if we only got 34.5? Chief. Maybe, again, you know, this is the same answer over and over again, but, but this seems like something that, you know, should be relatively well-known, like what are we going to get for an OTS grant?
Unfortunately, the money that comes from OTS is often generated based on the number of traffic collisions and fatalities that we've had from the previous year. So in a year when we have a lot of enforcement and not so many fatalities and pedestrian traffic collisions, we don't get as much money because we're doing the things we're supposed to do with enforcement and those kind of things and having the luck of, or maybe the fortune of not having those things happen. But the, the larger that number grows, the more money you get the following year. And so that's how some of that is factored in to determine how much you're going to get from OTS. So it's one of those things that you have to project, but it's never the same because there's only one pot of money and OTS decides who's going to get it throughout the state. So that's how they divvy it up. And unfortunately, if you get a high number, a high dollar amount, it means the previous year was not all that good from a traffic collision perspective for the city stats.
As I recall, these, these funds were used for like sobriety checkpoints, things, things of that nature, is that?
Sobriety checkpoints, driver's license checkpoints, all safety-related traffic matters, as well as training and education, other community engagement efforts that are approved by OTS and then broadcast out through our community information apparatus.
But these are special revenue funds, so whatever we, it is that we get wouldn't affect the general fund, right? Because this would be restricted, restricted funds that can only be used for those purposes. So whatever we might receive in fiscal, that's what we program versus, you know, programming something at the beginning of the year and then having it not, you know, be a shortfall in the, in the overall general fund.
Yes, and if I can add, the only time that may be, there may be a variance in that is if you have a year where you get no money and still have to do a DUI checkpoint or two. It's got to be funded a little bit. So we, it has to be there somehow, but we try to manage it with the existing budget, but that's a very rare occurrence.
Why would we need to do a DUI checkpoint if we weren't being, you know, compensated or grant, you know, getting grant funds for it?
Well, they don't happen all the time, but there is a need throughout the year to ensure that we are still managing DUI is a major problem within the state. And now that we have drugged driving, that is still a significant issue with a whole lot of variables that we haven't yet come to terms with, the legislation or the operational capacity hasn't caught up with the legislation. So there's a lot of problems from the educational perspective and making sure we're getting out there, putting the warnings out for the safety, from a safety component for the members of the community. So it's very important sometimes to get out there, even if just for informational purposes.
Oh, sure, of course. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
So just, that's one of the follow-ups.
Please.
On that item then, really does, the only thing it really affects is on the budget, it looks like it's a negative number when, or a, a delta when actually we, we, there would be no way to predict that?
Yeah, there's no way to predict it.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Be quite honest.
We don't like to see those brackets as council members.
Exactly. Well, because I mean, you know, just noting, you know, if you look at these tables just down the, down, all the way down the column, it's a miss, right? There, there's very few where the, you know, actuals were greater than the budget, not, not, not just for public safety related things, chief, but, you know, just across, across the board. And that's, you know, how we got into this situation because we were never given a mid, any kind of mid-year update as to how we're doing from a revenue perspective, even though we appropriated and approved the spending, you know, at the beginning of the fiscal year. Obviously, that's why I personally prefer this, especially right now, just right now when we have this, you know, extenuating circumstances of the general fund deficit, that we have these touch points and so we can programmatically even, you know, be able to make decisions to right the ship. So, so that's why I really appreciate, you know, having this process right now. I'll spare then the, you know, everybody from some of the other things because it seems like this general answer here is, you know, the budgeted, you know, the expected revenue was not based on our best, our best, you know, our best information within the organization. Another mind-blowing and, you know, disappointing type of scenario. But again, always, I'm glad we're, you know, organizationally and culturally, we're, that we're, that we're, we're getting to, more to a place where I would say our best practices and that, you know, with our revenue projections going forward, they should, you know, obviously, we were always told that they were conservative, but now we, we, now we know that they were, they were not conservative or, or, you know, inflated. They were just. They were just...
Wrong.
Wrong. Thank you. I was gonna use a different word, but, but wrong is a, is the, is a synonym for the word I was gonna use. Um, so...
I predict next year, when you get your first quarter report, you'll see a different variance. It'll be very much better.
Yes, that, that's, that's very much appreciated.
May I say something?
Absolutely.
Just to kinda assist here a little bit?
Please.
I, I think I'm assisting. Um, if you start with, what I do like is, for example, if you start with page fifteen, um, they have the twenty eighteen nineteen and then year-to-date, um, for, you know, for that time period, and then the twenty nineteen twenty, the year-to-date, and then percentage collected. You can see the differences, um, especially with revenue. Unfortunately, it is very consistent that we were over, uh, estimating our revenues, and then you see twenty nineteen twenty, and that the numbers are significantly lower. Uh, your question, Mayor, regarding the parking fees is there. You can see it's, um, under fines and forfeiture is kind of the second to the last, um, groupings. Parking fines, uh, was estimated, or budgeted at nine hundred thousand. We only collected one forty-six, but for this year, we're saying five ninety-three. So far, we've collected one sixty-four. So, you know, it's, it's pretty consistent how off we were in the past, and so hopefully, I think this schedule's really helpful in kinda seeing that trend.
Exactly. I think that's part of why I, I wanted to drill down and then get more information about, about these, um, shortfalls, because if it's a trend too, then it, it, the, the net, the last thing, set of things that I'll ask about is, you know, what's, what's already been, uh, baked in to the twenty, the nineteen twenty budget in terms of revenue expectations? Uh, one last one on, on these, on these shortfalls is the development impact fees on page eight. Um, again, just a consistent, you know, shortfall of between what was budgeted to what is the actual, to the overall tune of seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, now, this is a slightly different category, cause it, I think it is very dependent upon whether, uh, developments are progressing to the point where we can collect those impact fees and so forth and so on. So, is this a situation where, you know, um, the revenue, or the revenue estimate, what was budgeted was, was set in absence of good information, or is this also a situation where significant delays in development projects also cause us to miss these numbers?
I think it was, um, a, a variety of things, but one of them was that he was, was looking at history, and in like two years ago, we had a lot of, uh, development come in and that fees were very high that year. So when these, uh, um, budget recommendations were made, what he was basing them on were on higher numbers. And so what actually occurred, um, in the, I'm not explaining this well, when he was, when we look at budget, um, estimates and we're preparing them in February or March, we're looking at what happened a year ago and what happened in this year. So a year ago, it, we had some significant building, um, permits pulled, and in the current year, we were expecting them to be pulled, but they weren't. But the projection that we were looking at in the future year went back and looked at two years. So for the development fees, they're very difficult to budget because you don't know what type of permit is gonna be pu- pulled. You can still have good building permits, but they don't affect the, um, police department, but they do affect the park fee, and they don't affect the, the traffic impact fee depending upon what, um, type of permit it is. I, I guess overall, it's just difficult to tell. So this year going forward, we went very conservative. We did like a five-year history going for, going back, looking at what it was, and then taking it down to what we thought was gonna be coming in. And, and those aren't spent until they come in anyway, so...
Right. Right, right. That's true.
And I think, to add to that, I think what we are doing a lot more of is actually working very closely with finance to look at the projects and look at exactly where projects are. I think there, that, some of that may have been previously missed, where they looked at the estimates from previous years or what they had, uh, brought in, and instead of looking at the actual project timelines and where we are with some of these projects, use the same revenue estimates, whereas moving forward, what we've been doing is sitting down with Paula and her team and literally going through the projects, and I think we have a better sense of where projects are in the development process, so we can give our best guestimate, a conservative estimate of what we think, um, is gonna be coming in based on the projects and based on where the developers are. So I think you're gonna be seeing more of that, um, as we move forward in the budget process, and I think you're already seeing it based on the numbers we have. We're basing it on what we know will be coming in to the best of our abilities. I mean, there are some projects that we think are gonna come in, however, due to a variety of reasons, they don't. Um, but I, I certainly think we're a lot more on top of, um, the actuality of projects and where they are in the development process.
That's good to hear. Just two overall comments, because in my time here on the council, I've seen these, the projections for these, uh, for this revenue, these impact fees, um, basically just sort of increased by a certain percentage each year, you know? Um, and again, if this is something that Tom did in the absence of having any real information about, uh, where projects really are, um, then that was his fault. Um, because it seems to me that these will go up and down depending upon what projects are going on, and, and my second comment is it also seems that to me that they will be cyclical, and if we are going to be entering into a recessionary period of some kind, then you may get nothing, you know, um, uh, even though all the momentum for a project was building up to it, it just could be, you know, a cliff in terms of not getting the financing, cost being too high, whatever it is that, you know, any number of things can, can trip up a project. Um, so, um, so yeah, you know, it doesn't seem to me, it's not the type of revenue or line items that should, you know, like property tax, you should just, you know, can continue to steadily increase by a certain percentage each year. Um, you know, there's some years where it might be high and some years where it might be zero, uh, and, 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 but I think that that was never, ever reflected before in, in, um, what was adopted as a, as far as a budget.
It may also be the opposite. We may also have a project that we didn't expect maybe coming in, that comes in, so that number could be skewed in different ways. Um, so I think moving forward, we will be providing, as we did in this current budget cycle, a project list with what we think realistically will be coming in. Now, on a positive note, if we do have some projects that we weren't expecting to come in and end up coming in, even better for us, that number will go up. So I think we'd rather be a lot more conservative in our projections and base it on exactly what we know now, and then if we have some surprises that end up being good surprises, we welcome those as well.
Thank you. Um, page nine in grants, there are a number of line items where there are big deltas between the actual and the budgeted. I'm just curious why, you know, TA twenty-one, um, stipple reimbursement, there's grants, other agencies, you know, so those are respectively seven twenty-four K, six hundred and eight K, eight hundred and ten K, miscellaneous two hundred and ten K. It's a total of two point one-five million dollars that is, was not received, which were, you know, actually budgeted.
A lot of the revenues that are in the other grants fund are also related to capital improvement projects, so we budget for the expense side for the capital project. We also put in the revenue that we're expecting from some of these sources, these grants to go along with that. If we don't spend the money, then we don't get the money. Um, if we do spend the money, sometime there's a timing difference that it comes in after the end of the fiscal year because we've billed for it. Um, but it's never, um, there's always an expense that's related to this, but it doesn't get spent if we don't get the money unless we know it's a reimbursement-type thing and we've processed the reimbursement request.
Okay, got it. So for these types of grants and special funds, it seems that, um, that, uh, you know, because those are restricted funds, um, then if we don't get the money, we don't spend it.
Correct.
And then, but there are also situations where we spend the money, um, but, uh, the reimbursement is delayed and may not come in until the next fiscal year or something along those lines.
Or we haven't spent the money yet, and then we'll get the money. We always ask, um, well, we're starting to always ask for the actual grant, um, announcement from wherever we're getting into, so that finance knows that we actually have a pledged revenue coming in for that expense.
Right, cause I mean, for like CIP, for instance, we, we need to know that it's one hundred percent funded before we would even go out to bid, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, last thing is, uh, on this page, page nine, under risk management, uh, one twenty-nine dash thirty-six fifty-two, insurance charges. What is that?
For the, um, in two thousand eighteen nineteen, we were running all of the insurance payments, um, through this account. So it wasn't even, it wasn't, um, um, it's what we get from the departments when we charge for like workers' comp and liability. We have the expense in the risk management fund, and then we bring in revenue from the other funds to pay for those risk management expenses.
Mm-hmm.
But in eighteen nineteen, we were also running through payments for, um, your health insurance, your dental insurance, and those type things. So it was just an accounting change that we've made going forward into eighteen nineteen, I mean, um, nineteen twenty, that we're not doing that anymore. So what you'll see in risk management going forward is truly only risk management of workers' comp, liability, unemployment.
Right, and is it correct that the workers' comp and, and liability that are from each de- particular departments are charged to those departmental budgets?
Correct.
Now, now?
That...
Even though the risk management fund is the sort of overall clearinghouse for, for the payments and of, you know, JPIA and what, what have you, right?
Correct. The, the risk management fund is, makes the payment to JPIA, but then we allocate those charges to all the other departments.
Okay. Okay. Um, thank you. Then just really quickly, you know, um, in the nineteen twenty first quarter, uh, report here, um, page fifteen of this, uh, overall report, you know, general fund revenues, utility users' tax, what we've budgeted is four point five million. Um, the eighteen nineteen budget was four point eight million, and we see this revenue source declining steadily, uh, whether it's due to bundling or whatever it is, but, you know, my concern is, 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 you know, there's three line items here, which I, I would ask to make sure, you know, in the mid-year report, to ensure that we don't need to revise these down, downward again, right? Utility users' tax, sales tax, and the transient occupancy tax. Um, I pull them out because they're the most variable, you know, I guess, and, uh, property tax should be relatively, you know, uh, steady. Um, these other ones, you know, would, uh, fluctuate a lot depending upon, uh, economic activity in the city. And then the utility users' tax, I'll just note too, I mean, um, there, I think we do have a contract with a vendor that helps to audit that and make sure that you're, that, you know, each city or agency is actually, you know, getting what it, what it's deserved. I forget the name of the company now, but, um, but, uh, have we been utilizing that at all? And, and just to make sure that we are actually collecting the, the utility users' tax that we're supposed to, I guess?
We have the, the contract with, um, HDL to do that for sales tax and property tax. We had one with Muni Services for utility tax, but it wasn't, they didn't actually go out and audit it. They just monitored the, what was going on in the utility tax world and helped you notify everybody that, um, or they would notify people of what cities had UUTs. They weren't actually doing auditing for us.
So how do, what, what would be required in order to, uh, make sure that we're getting the UUT that, you know, we deserve or that it was supposed to be?
Well, we've been going through and looking at per provider, what we've been receiving, and, and that's how we narrowed it down to the communication field, um, of why we didn't get as much as we'd anticipated. And then we did contact, um, uh, Muni Services to see if they could help us determine why, and they're the ones that came up with the bundling issue and, um, explained that in more detail to us.
I guess one thing that might be helpful, or, uh, one level of comfort is just seeing the, the percentage by which this, uh, revenue line item is declining in other cities, and if ours is, you know, uh, you know, sort of in line with what's happening generally, cause I could believe that, uh, you know, industry-wide, there are issues going on and, and people are, you know, s- they're not signing up for landlines anymore. Um, you know, they're just skipping straight to the cellphone, you know, they're not, you know, they don't need, we don't need cable anymore. We can just get streaming services on YouTube or Hulu Plus or whatever. Um, but, uh, but yeah, I think that, uh, not to give people out their ideas, and we want, we want your UUT. Um, but, um, but you know, um, I guess the, you know, my, what, my concern would just be, you know, that we're not, again, selling ourselves short and, and not getting revenue that really we should be getting. Um, other line items here that, you know, again, it's un- under licenses and permits, the building permits, and the overnight parking permits. Um, just wanna, I, I guess at mid-year review, I would, I would like to be able to see and if we have a level of comfort making, you know, with the, with what was budgeted in terms of revenue for these line, line items. Uh, same thing with plan checking fees, um, special plan check, special project plan check services, but I, if I understand that line item correctly, that is where developers pay for expedited service. Is that correct? So that's a revenue-neutral item either way, uh, for, for us, the city. Okay, well, then forget about that one. I guess we don't need to, you know, really, you know, make sure that we're getting what we're expecting, but the other ones like planning fees, plan checking, you know, highly dependent upon, you know, whatever projects are going on. Um, again, here, uh, in our, maybe I, you know, know the answer now, but, uh, under public safety and fire services, what was budgeted for revenue last year was eight hundred thousand. What we budgeted this year was four hundred thousand. So is that, again, a case of Tom putting in a number that wasn't realistic?
And what we received in eighteen nineteen, I believe, was four hundred as well, even though the budget was eight hundred. So it is more in, in line with what we've received.
Um, recreation, swimming pool revenue, as well as, um, facility rental revenue. Um, does the facility rental revenue, let me just see here, is that inclusive of the Mission Playhouse?
No.
Okay, so that's under the next, the special funds?
Correct.
Special revenue funds, okay. So this would be just, uh, for, say, somebody renting the, um, patio room for a board meeting or something along those lines?
Right, or the park pavilions, those type of things.
Right. Or, yeah, like, uh, one of the picnic shelters for, for a birthday party or something. Okay. Uh, but yeah, the Mission Playhouse ones, I was actually kinda sup- you know, you know, definitely would like to see what the actuals are, you know, at mid-year, um, and whether these need, some of these need to be revised down. The building rentals, I'm surprised it's so low, to be honest with you two, and this is like, since, we've had a study session on the Mission Playhouse, and I think we need to continue that conversation as to how, I think long-term, you know, it, it's a beautiful facility, and it should have the potential to be revenue-neutral to the city, something that currently we, the general fund subsidizes the Mission Playhouse. Um, I think that's to a tune of one point four million or something along those?
No.
No? Oh, seven hundred?
Yeah.
Okay. Still, seven hundred thousand dollars that, um, you know, you know, we see it right here, which is, uh, it's not lit up in all these neon lights and stuff like that, but, um, but at the same time, you know, it should be able to be, generate more revenue than that, and, um, and, you know, frankly, uh, like box office, box office charges, just feels low. Feel, at all, all of these line items of revenue feels very low, and, you know, maybe we even need to revisit our, um, facility fee waiver policy, because I think that there are a lot of, uh, groups that will just do a performance for free, knowing that they don't have to pay, they don't have to pay the rental fee if they, um, can fit within our, our policy guidelines, um, but, you know, that's revenue that we're losing, so. And whether or not our, you know, stated license, our fee is, is the right fee, that, you know, what's market and so forth and so on, I think that those all need to be, uh, reexamined as well in the future.
And the council did just approve new fees for the Mission promin- Mission, uh, Playhouse with the, um, uh, citywide fee schedule that we adopted on, uh, September seventeenth. They had a new schedule in there and, uh, new fee set up and, and trying to get, uh, mid-week rentals and, and those type things in there. So they did look at it, and we'll look forward to see what they come in at mid-year.
Yeah, definitely. I know this is, it's a more in-depth conversation that specifically relates to Mission Playhouse, but I know there's also talk about, you know, that there's a backroom that could be utilized for black box theater or other types of, you know, smaller events, that you don't need a fourteen-hundred-seat auditorium, but you just wanna have like, uh, even a reception, um, you know, that, those kinds of things that could actually generate revenue as well that, um, I think to date, we just haven't capitalized on yet. Um, so under risk management on page twenty, uh... So under risk management on page twenty, again, there's this, this line item of insurance charges. So I guess this is, this is, and there's a big delta between what was budgeted last year and what we're budgeting this, this year, you know, it's like a four point five million dollar, four point six million dollar difference, actually. What is, what accounts for that?
Again, in, in eighteen nineteen, we were running off the health insurance, dental insurance, and those type payments through this fund. So even when we charged it to the departments with their payroll, then we would move it over to this fund and then make a payment out of that fund. So it was kind of double counting it. And we don't do that anymore, so the nineteen twenty budget is a lot less because it's not accounting for those employee charges.
Hmm. I see. So this one twenty-nine dash thirty-six fifty-two, like, as you said, then, used to also carry the workers' comp and liability. And now that's broken out separately and...
Correct.
But I will, I will note a positive trend in this regard. This is our overall insurance costs, at least, were lower, lower this year than, than they were last year, and I think that's a very positive sign. And that's, I think, testament to our risk management and HR to, you know, try to minimize as much as possible workers' comp claims and, of course, general liability claims. On the expenditure side, on page twenty-two, under Mission Playhouse, there's, I guess we have a budget here on, on, under production or for production of seven hundred forty-nine thousand. I can't remember what that, you know, what that relates to. Because I'm, I'm, I'm looking at these budgeted numbers to see where, if anywhere, we might cut further if we needed to, you know, at the mid-year, mid-year review.
So the production numbers would relate directly to, so these divisions were changed as part of our current budget. Production numbers relate directly to staffing costs, all of the back-of-house staff as well, so the tech staff, as well as all of the front-of-house costs, so all of the Escher staff, as well as box offices included in there as well.
I see.
And while I'm up here, I'll just say that we still do have a consultant who is continuing to work on looking at, primarily looking at the financial aspects of the Playhouse, and that will be coming back to the council. I don't have an exact time on that right now. I can get that and get back to you whether or not we would have that in time for the mid-year, or whether we would want to, say, to be continued, and we'll have that discussion as part of the...
Yeah, we have, we have, we have bigger fish, fish to fry, even though that is a, that's a medium-sized fish, but, you know, the sales tax measure, I think, will be a primary concern, you know, going into March. And then, but, but yeah, I appreciate that those efforts are still ongoing because we should bring that conversation back. I just don't know if we'll, we will have bandwidth to, to deal with it, you know. And I, it feels to me like it's a more in-depth and longer conversation than we can have at the time of the mid-year review, so. But, you know, up to your, up to your discretion as well as, as far as the kind of progress that you're making. But thanks for that. This appears then, it's not something that actually could be cut. It's not, we're, it's not money that we're spending doing productions, it's just the labor costs. And as I understand it, if a producer comes in to do a, a performance at the Playhouse, they actually pay for those labor costs, the ushers, the, the stage folks, the...
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, let's just, you know, I think, you know, as I said, probably it'll be more meaningful at the mid-year review, so we can have a, a real substantive update as to how the revenues are coming in for the current year, against what we sort of projected at the beginning of the year, and then, you know, whether or not further revisions or cuts are necessary at that time. Hopefully, we'll be surprised to the upside, and then, you know, we can breathe a little bit easier perhaps. But, but, you know, I think that, I think that we need to look at every line item, you know. We need to make sure every line item, you know, the revenue, you know, I'm pointing out just the, the line items that jumped out to me because they were off by a significant amount, hundreds of thousands, you know, that total up to like millions, on the revenue side. And then on the expenditure side, you know, of course, if you don't have the revenue, then you can't, you can't, you can't spend the money. So, so, so it is about tightening our belts to a certain extent and, and making sure that we're, you know, we're spending within our means. So thank you, Paula, for all of your hard work on, on all this, and to all the staff, because I think that all the departments have contributed to making sure that our budget process going forward, the current and, and, and future budget process is, you know, more realistic and, and more, I think, in line with the basic business principles of, you know, having, having strong and realistic revenue expectations, therefore, you know, having spending that, you know, is commensurate with that. So I appreciate everything that staff has done to, to try to right the ship in this Anybody have any follow-up comments or questions? Yeah, oh yeah, regarding the CC processing fees, I think that there's a consensus that we, we want to pass this on and not have to, you know, pay for fifty thousand dollars worth of CC process. First of all, I will say that three point five percent, I think, is extremely high. I mean, you know, we should be able to get a better processing rate than that. So the question to me is, do we want to gross up the fees to account for the credit card processing, or just separately charge the fees for, that, that processing fee, whatever it may be, on top of whatever, you know, the amount is that is being paid? And I think that, I think that, that, you know...
We can't do that on the fly because every card has a different rate. There's like fifty different rates, literally.
Yeah.
Right. What, what we can do is bring it back when we bring the fees back and give you more detailed information of what rates we can get and what processing companies we can use, and then you can make a decision at that point.
Because a lot of them are based on cards. Like a two percent card back, we're getting our processing fee plus the two percent is going back to that customer.
Right.
So we, we wouldn't know what that, the actual fee on that individual card was, we'd just have to aggregate it. Which means some people are getting short change and other people are getting overcharged.
Right.
There's a government service rate that we can use, and there's companies out there that use that, and we've got a couple proposals.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if we could work it into our fee schedule, then it would be, I'm just worried about the legality of, of doing that.
Right.
We would have to have a study to do that.
Do we know the answer to that question?
Well, I'd have to take a look, but generally, I would assume that the credit card charges would be part of the cost of providing service, and therefore, it would be part of the, you know, Prop twenty-six analysis for the fee.
We, we have the government code that allows us to pass on the fee, putting it into the fees, we'd have to work with Keith and make sure we did it appropriately.
So it seems the easiest thing, though, is just to, whatever that fee is for that particular transaction, because it's also even for like business licenses, for instance. One business is gonna differ from the next as, as far as what the amount of the business license itself is, and therefore, you know, the amount of the processing fee is also gonna differ, not just based on, you know, which card they're using, but also which, you know, their business in that, a particular business situation. I think I'm hearing that you're saying that it's, we know we can just, like, if it's, you know, for that particular transaction, it happens to be three point five percent, we charge that, that person three point five percent during that transaction, that's perfectly legal. And, and nothing that, and do we, what kind of action would we need to take to, to make it so?
We're looking for a direction from council tonight. We'll actually be bringing the fees back to the council at a future night, so I think we, we've heard what we need to hear, and then we'll bring that analysis, we'll work with Keith's office.
Yep, yep. Okay, you have clear enough direction about that?
We do.
Okay, so the recommended action is to review and file, adopt Resolution twenty nineteen dash fifty-six for the carryover and miscellaneous appropriations in the CIP and capital slash special projects funds, approve recommended staffing changes, which are recategorizations. And again, I, I also agree with Vice Ramon Chaka's comment that when, I think, you know, we always see when we have new employees or, or promotions and so forth, but what the public doesn't see then is that these are to actually fill, you know, vacancies or fill, fill positions that were vacant for, sometimes for a long time, or, and to replace staffing if somebody senior laterals to somewhere else, you know, that's not something we celebrate here with a presentation, but, but it is a position that needs to be filled, and, and we've been lucky enough to have very qualified and, and talented staff members who can promote up into those positions. And so, yeah, I mean, you know, some, some note about that, and says, otherwise it looks like you're just, you know, just always taking on more and more employees. I mean, it's, it's not, you know, it's, it's, first of all, not true, and would be just completely silly. So yes, I mean, you know, so I think some, some information about that is, is appropriate as well. Let's see here, approve the twenty twenty, twenty-one guiding principles, receive and file the twenty twenty, twenty-one budget preparation calendar, authorize city manager to transfer general fund contingency appropriations to departments affected by the pending legal settlement, provide direction on credit card pass-through, fee pass-throughs to customer for both under and over five thousand dollars, which I think we've already done, right? So, one, two, three, four, five. I'll make a motion to approve the recommend action, bullet points one, two, three, four, and five.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second, let's go to the board.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Not too bad. Oh, just my part. Hey, that is still not the record. That is still not the record, so. No, I mean, I, I think that we do, we need to, we need to fully understand, you know, what's going on in, in our, in our budget. And the only way we can do that is by making sure we, we clarify the details. The devil's always in the details, so, so without having that information, we can't make, you know, we can't make good decisions up here on the dais. Next item, please.
Public comment. Comments are limited to three minutes. If you wish to address the city council, we request that you please complete a speaker's request card and hand it to the clerk. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, first card I have here is from Ms. Kilgore. She's here. Nice, nice, here. Thank you for waiting, Ms. Kilgore. I know you wanted to speak on this.
I was just going to mention something regarding a contract that was just issued on the street maintenance, and, but I didn't hear you guys talk about it at all. But it's in the minutes, though. But that's an area that I talked to Darren Grilly about in two thousand and fifteen, and two streets weren't even included on it that are very busy in this area. Padilla, between Mission Drive and South Arroyo, and Maze Alley. They're both very busy. South Arroyo Drive from Padilla to Maze Alley was redone, was repaved, and that was done, I think, regarding the flood control channel, because you guys didn't do it. And Carrillo is a street that was redone several years ago, and just last year had a slurry, slurry seal done. But Padilla is the main street where everybody on South Arroyo goes north, because if you go up Padilla, they can make a left-hand turn to go north in, to go like to Pasadena or anywhere. On South Arroyo, otherwise, you have to go all the way down to Santa Anita. So people that are going north come down to the very end of South Arroyo, go up Padilla, and can make a left-hand turn. And that needs to be really repaved. And Maze Alley is almost across directly from the project at two thirty-five, where the bridge is going to come out to the street. And Maze Alley is gonna be almost directly across it. That's a very busy alley. People walk up that alley to go to the bus stop on Mission and Broadway, and it's a very busy trap, pedestrian traffic and car traffic. And those two roads should have been included in the study. It's busy, those two streets are busier than Karma, Carmelita, that's right next door to two six one West Mission area, and it wasn't included. And when I talked to Darren Grilly several years ago, we talked about the traffic issues, the road not being repaired and things, and he said that all the, the small streets in this little area from Santa Anita, Padilla, were going to be involved in the repaving project. And I pulled public records, the only records that were available were from two thousand and ten. Nothing that was done, street repair, anything is available to look at. So the only records that I have is from two thousand and ten to about a year ago, public records regarding the street repairs and anything that was done in that area. But those are two streets that should have been included in the street maintenance, and under my impression, they were being included originally, so. I just wanted to bring that up, to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kilgore. Next, we have Paul Padilla.
Who will hear the cry of the poor? Those of you who are Catholic, grew up Catholic, or attended church in the last forty years, know that song. Who will hear the cry of the poor? I've emailed two of you. I'm now coming before you publicly to implore all of you to hear the cry of the poor. Right now, all across the state, there are people, thousands of them, being evicted unjustly in no-fault evictions, having their rent doubled, tripled, quadrupled ahead of January first in implementation of statewide rent control and eviction control. So I've heard their cries, and that's why I'm here tonight. I'm asking you to follow the lead of LA, of Pasadena, and now Alhambra, who are doing what they can now before January first to put an emergency ordinance in place to stop this, and say, we're not gonna let these unscrupulous landlords screw people over or kick them out into the streets. I did another year of the homeless count, and those of you who have done it, I think probably everyone on this council, many in this room, know that it's a very depressing annual ritual. And these types of evictions are one of the leading causes of homelessness, temporary or otherwise. And so if we really wanna help the homeless, which we all say we wanna do, one of the best ways we can do it is to prevent it in the first place. And we can do that before January first, we can do that ASAP. Pasadena, in fact, called two meetings on one night, one starting at twelve oh one, in order to get this done on an urgency basis. So I'm calling on, on you to do the same. You can't do it tonight, I know, but I'm calling on you to do it as soon as you can, and to make it retroactive, so that anyone who has received a sixty-day notice has legal recourse to not be put out onto the street. So I hope you will hear the cry of the poor. I hope that it's not something where you're gonna be implored by the apartment-building landlords. That's the other thing I need to say. This only applies to apartment-building landlords, this is not single-family homes. So please act urgently. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Next, we have Chuck Sances.
Good evening. In regarding to fees, especially credit card fees and transparency, if you bury the credit... In regarding to fees, especially credit card fees and transparency, if you bury the credit card fee into the permit charges, aren't you charging people extra when they pay cash or check? So it would be a bad idea to do that because you'd be penalizing people that don't use credit cards.
Thank you, Mr. Sances. All right. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address the City Council? Seeing none, I will close this second, you know, public comment period. Next item, please.
City managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a quick update. As much as I'd love Paula to stick around forever, the state will only allow us to keep her until January, when she runs out of her hours. So she and I are interviewing a couple potential interim directors that will step in at that time, so we won't have a lapse. Somebody that will take us through the budget season, and then we'll look at being, fully recruiting at that point. We have tried to recruit for a finance director, and unfortunately, South Pasadena, Alhambra, San Marino, West Covina, and Monterey Park were all recruiting for finance directors at the same time, and so we have not been successful. And there is such a demand for finance directors that I talked to a recruiter that normally charges $25,000 for a recruitment, and they would not even entertain the thought because they have not been able to find finance directors that are capable, and they don't want to take the money in order to do a job that they can't complete. So we'll find somebody that will step in in the interim, and then Paul and I have a couple ideas long-term, but we are working on it, and I'll keep you all updated as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next item.
Council comments and conference and meeting reports.
We'll start with Vice Mayor Manchaca.
Well, I have four, so I'll try to be brief. First of all, Dia de los Muertos. I just want to congratulate Angelica and Armane and the whole team. It was our second annual, and it was so well-attended. There were so many people at 6 o'clock, and it was very family-oriented. It was culturally rich and right on target. The music was fabulous. The food was good. It was just such a nice atmosphere. The weather was perfect. But I just really wanted to applaud you and Yolanda Garcia from La Casita del Pueblo and Huider. Just a really great, great effort, great job. And I think, you know, we had so much competition that night. There were just so many other Dia de los Muertos. It was a Friday. And to have the number of people that we did have, I mean, that's just, it was very, very impressive. So thank you to them. I wanted to also give a shout-out to Greg and his team. They published their second Public Works Report, Fall of 2019. It's on the website. Again, just so well-stated, and I think people just would appreciate to know what is the status of projects, of our infrastructure. And I know it takes a lot of time, but it's just so well-done, very concise, kind of the executive summary. But I really appreciate that, Greg, and please send my thanks to your team for that. On October 22nd and October 23rd, I was, I was very pleased to attend a conference that was held at the San Gabriel Unified School District called STRIVE: Strategic, Tactical, and Resilient Introduction of Violent Extremism. I want to thank the chief for bringing that to our, well, to our city, and we are the first city in California to actually have the program. Some of the people that attended included a lot of the medical personnel, our police. It was just a really nice group of people, just a multitude of community members that all are impacted by this. Some of the members were Sue Fitzsimmons, Edward was there, let's see, myself, of course. I was trying to see if there was anyone else that was, that's here right now. Oh, Sharon and Marilyn were there also. And the purpose of it is just to kind of give us, and I, the, well, let me go back. They talk about, we talk about, you know, all politics are local. Well, so is extremism. It starts at the local level. And it's about community policing and just understanding, you know, that if you see something, you hear something, you should say something. And even though we think, you know, this is San Gabriel, it would never happen. But it was made very clear, especially with our police and our medical community, that we have so many people that come from the outside and that stay in our facilities, and we really need to be very aware, not only our police, but as a community, you know, to really pay attention to some of the signs. Extremism isn't about ethnicity. It's about behavior, and it can happen in all forms. So it was just really good. So I just wanted to, again, applaud our chief, and I think all of us who were there felt that our time was well-spent. It was from 8 to 5, but, you know, we were very interactive. And I'm not sure if the trainers who were there, I mean, they just kept emphasizing what a great class we were, how interactive we were, how engaged we were, and that they felt that, you could tell, this is a very special community. We have a great chief who's leading in community policing, and we all just care about this community. So I don't know if they were just trying to, you know, you know, flatter us, but we really felt that we were one of the best classes they've ever had. But, and then lastly, I will be at the Eddie's Award along with Vice Mayor, and again, let's hope for, the fourth time is the charm, and hope to bring back whatever that Eddie Award looks like, but bring something back. Thank you.
Councilmember Harrington.
I have nothing to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Costanza.
Thank you, Mayor Pooh. I did also want to comment on the Dia de los Muertos event. My family and I attended, and it's just another great example of how we do celebrate our diversity in the city. And it was very touching moments, but very celebratory also, and our family certainly enjoyed it. Congratulate again to the city of San Gabriel for winning the award from AYC on the 25th. Well-deserved. We should all be very proud of our partnership with Agent Youth Center. And again, they give so much to the residents, not only in the city of San Gabriel, but throughout the valley. And that's it for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Leal.
Thank you, Mayor. So I got a new assignment from LA County Assessor's Office. So I'm going to be the advisory council, and of course, you know, the first job is to help those fire victims. Any home and business owners who suffer property loss, more than 10,000 or more, can be filed as called the Application for Reassessment, Misfortune, and Calamity. And so they don't have to pay the properties for now, but you have to apply within 12 months of time, you know. So, yeah, if there's anyone that has question, they can ask me. And also, another, you know, common area is the decline in value. So any properties that are being over-assessed, and you can appeal between July 2nd through December 2nd. So you've got more than one month to apply. And this can be applied online, and it's very easy. They have instruction line by line how you can, you know, apply for the hearing. Another report I have to make is the San Gabriel Valley COG ENR. Remember our last meeting, I mentioned about the water contamination. EPA found five cities throughout the state of California, and they have this called PFAS. And that stuff is from Dupont, Taffon, and 3M Scotch Guard, and also the firefighting form for so many years, and some of these chemicals that, you know, went to the underground and contaminated our groundwater. But I asked our district here, it's called the Upper San Gabriel Valley Water District, and their answer is, no, we don't have that issue. As a matter of fact, the EPA guideline is 70 parts per trillion, so it's really nothing. So they use, it's called the reverse osmosis, and also is the activate carbon, and that can remove the chemicals. So it's safe to drink the water from the tap. So, so far, it's good news.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Leal. I'll try to keep mine brief as well. I want to echo all the comments about the great community events, Dia de los Muertos, also since last council meeting was Fall Fun Festival and the AYC Gala. I hope that staff enjoyed being able to come onstage and share that award. It really is a team effort. We wouldn't be, you know, getting that community partnership award without a lot of members of the Police Department, community servers from all parts of the organization engaging with AYC. And I really do think that it's a testament to not only the work that they do, but the work that we do, you know, and in collaboration with them. Some examples is, you know, for 20, over 25 years, our PD has been engaging with their probation program. That's how AYC actually started, is working with LA County probation and trying to help at-risk youth stay on or stay on the right path or, you know, get away from the wrong path. The community, what's it called? The Community Academy, right? That's done in Chinese there, and it helps to keep that segment of the population informed, you know, and aware, like, don't fall for scams, what to do if called in different situations, you know, even addressing issues of domestic violence and what to do. And, you know, make sure that they know they can always reach out to us for help. So thank you to Chief and to the Police Department for that, the partnership that Community Services and Rebecca did with AYC and the CarMax Foundation and Kaboom, got the new playground at Smith Parks. So all these things are really great examples of partnership with AYC. Last meeting, I said I would report back on the League of California Cities Conference. So that was a couple weeks ago. I would say that there were, to me, there were three main emphases, which were housing, affordability, and the census. And, you know, I think that it's very timely for us in terms of housing, you know, housing and affordability really go hand in hand. And of course, you know, the projection is that we, the state of California is 3.5 million housing units short. So until supply and demand equalize, you know, of course, affordability is going to continue to suffer. Or where it's affordable for people to live is going to be far away from the job that allows them to be able to afford that house, right? That creates traffic and congestion, and creates environmental problems because they're commuting two hours each way. So I think that these are all, these are all relevant issues, and the legislature has responded, and the governor signed at least, at least 18 housing-related bills in this cycle, which ended, I think his deadline was October 13th. And so I look forward to a chance when we, you know, can get an update with respect to what changes or what policy, you know, affects us here locally in San Gabriel. I will note that I think Bismarck Obando at the league, then the league is preparing a summary of those bills, those laws, which we can then piggyback off of. I don't want, you know, to spend an inordinate amount of staff time when somebody else is already doing the heavy lifting. And census was, it was good to see that there was a lot of engagement about census and that, you know, communities across the state are all, you know, committing to and pitching in for that fair, accurate, and complete count. So that was all very positive. I also attended the COG Transportation Committee meeting and also Governing Board meeting. So out of that, there's a couple of different things that I think, you know, we on here on the council should be aware of. At the Transportation Committee meeting, there was a presentation made regarding SB-743. That's right. So what this is, is SB-743 changes the metric that we use to measure traffic when we are evaluating projects. You can see Councilmember Harrington nodding his head because he knows. So it's changing from Level of Service, LOS, you know, we can rate each intersection or street segment from A to F. That's what Level of Service is. But it's changing to Vehicle Miles Traveled, VMT. And that means that each project will need to be evaluated based on how many vehicle miles traveled it generates. And now, in order to be able to calculate that, you need to have a baseline. And that, having that baseline means you have to have a traffic study, you know, often it means you have to have a citywide traffic study in the first place. So, and then, and I think all of this needs to be implemented by the end of June next year. Is that correct? Yeah. So by June 30 of 2020. Well, what if you're a city that, you know, doesn't have the funds to do a citywide parking study, which could be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars? And then what if your neighboring city doesn't have it, you know? And how then do you evaluate, you know, you can't, none of these things can be, you know, evaluated in a vacuum, right? It has to be actually sort of regional, and everybody has to have a consistent methodology in order to be able to really calculate or have an accurate, you know, count as to what these, this VMT, vehicle miles traveled is. So we should be on the lookout for that and how we will be addressing this. And I've asked staff to, you know, bring that back. It doesn't have to be, it's not going to be immediate, but it is something that's coming up very, very quickly, and I frankly don't know how we're going to, how we're going to implement SB-743. Two more items to highlight is that the COG Governing Board did adopt the I-605 Corridor Aesthetic Master Plan. So this is something I didn't even know was possible, but apparently now all of the overpasses and underpasses and sound walls and so forth and so on, well, we will strive to have a consistent look and feel for the whole I-605 corridor. And so, anyway, that's, it's great for them because, yeah, yeah, great for them that, you know, I think that all these things will look nicer. And, you know, there's incorporation of the basin and like with the layers of sediment and the design and so forth and so on. That's one thing. The other thing I will note is that the COG Board did also adopt a region-wide swimming pool ordinance. This is not something that has legal effect, but it's a recommended ordinance, which I don't know if they will be contacting us about it or not. It's basically an ordinance to require all residents to maintain their swimming pools in the effort to, you know, keep, you know, vector control, mosquitoes under control. So those were the COG things. Lastly, Vice Mayor Manchaca and I did meet with Mark and spent a considerable amount of time drafting our argument for the sales tax measure, which is being called conveniently enough Measure SG. I think it's a good statement, and there was no argument against received, so there will be no rebuttals. And I guess in the ballot materials, there will only be the argument for printed. And of course, we will do our educational campaign as well to make sure that people are aware of, aware of the measure and what the sort of need and benefits are of passing this measure, which I think is, you know, something that we do sorely need. And I'll note to, just to name a few, actually. Pasadena, Burbank, Glendale, Arcadia, they have all passed it already. Alhambra, Temple City, Monterey Park, South Pasadena, Monrovia, I think Sierra Madre, is that correct? You know, all of these cities are all going out with the same measure today. Some are, some are today, right? Some are today, so we'll even get to see, you know, whether they pass, those cities pass the measure or not. And some of them are considering it for March in the same way that we are, which they have to hustle if they want to get onto the ballot. But, but yeah, but I think that, you know, it's a no-brainer, and you may not get this opportunity again to, to basically, you know, shore up your city's finances. again to, to basically, you know, shore up your city's finances and for us, you know, to put us on that path towards sustainability. So that's it for me. The next city council meeting will be on November 19th at 6:30 PM here in the council chambers, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.